Good evening and welcome to the Town Council meeting of Monday, June 12th, 2023, at 7:01 PM here in the McKinnon Council chambers. Relative to Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 20F, and for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded both video and by both video and audio methods. Item number one is the play to allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, roll call. Sue.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Lozo.
Here.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Rivas.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Nine present, we have a quorum and a meeting. Item number three, consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, April 10th, 2023.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Ryan, second by Counselor Lozo, Counselor Adams.
Make a motion to amend that to say May 22nd, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Adams and a second by Counselor Dow to amend that to say May 22nd, 2023. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Any discussion on the minutes? There being none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number four, subcommittee reports. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We will be having a meeting this Wednesday in the Rice Conference Room at 6:00 PM. That's June 14th. Thank you.
Education Human Services, Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. We had a meeting on May 31st in the Veterans Room at 6:00 PM. There's a couple of meeting, a couple of agenda items on here tonight, and we already discussed the Thrive Act at the last meeting. Thank you.
Very good. General Gummett, Counsel Steves.
We did have a meeting on the 7th. We talked a little bit about the flag and seal proposal, which we're just going to the next meeting on a couple of other items that we will bring up when we get them. And we do have, we're actually in the process of trying to set up one for the 21st after the other subcommittee meeting that night, so.
Very good. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
We haven't had a meeting since our last Town Council meeting, but I have set one up for June 20th at 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room. Thank you.
Very good. Protection of Persons and Property, Counsel Lozo.
Through the J A, we had a meeting on June 5th. There were agenda items tonight that we'll give recommendations on. Thank you very much.
Very good. Item number five, Chairman's announcements. I have a couple this evening. First one, Quincyman College is announcing its Bridges to College program, which is taking place in August. There will be English and math seminars designed to give a jumpstart to anyone preparing for college coursework. All books, computer access codes, and supplies will be provided at no cost to each student. To learn more, email to baraya, B-A-R-A-Y-A, at qcc.mass.edu or call 508-854-2894. I was honored to attend the graduation ceremony for the class of 2023 at Southbridge High School last Friday. By all accounts, it was a huge success. Parents, family, and friends, faculty and staff, dignitaries, and most importantly, the graduates, all enjoyed the pomp and circumstance that the occasion deserved. As a member of the class of 75, I offer my congratulations to the newly graduated alumni, and you have my warmest best wishes to every success as you embark on your next adventures in life. On Friday, June 2nd, the town of Spencer suffered a tragedy when the first congregational church, a building over 150 years old, went up in flames, leaving its parishioners homeless. My sympathy and heartfelt sorrow go out to those parishioners and the community of Spencer as a whole, and I wish them well in the coming months as they begin the process of rebuilding. I was recently able to hear a recording of the radio chatter coming from that scene. Southbridge Fire Chief Paul Normandin happened to be in the area and responded to the scene. With the consent of the Spencer Officer in Charge, Chief Normandin took command of the incident and immediately set up a command post. When listening to the radio communications, you can't help but be impressed with how the chief made command decisions, including the deployment of resources, the striking of additional alarms, and the reading of the progress of the fire, resulting in his making decisions to redeploy equipment and firefighters, preventing a potential loss of life and saving the cost of replacing vehicles and equipment that could have been destroyed. Further, he calmly directed an expansion of the operation when the fire was threatening to move into adjoining buildings and prevented further destruction. In short, Chief Normandin exhibited the highest levels of professionalism when faced with an extreme situation and the potential of dire circumstances. I believe we are extremely fortunate here in Southbridge to be able to call Paul one of our own as Chief of the Southbridge Fire Department. It is obvious he holds himself to a high standard of professionalism and dedication to his profession. Even so, he is not alone here. He is one of many men and women who have dedicated themselves to serving the citizens of Southbridge in the fire and in the police departments. So today, I just want to take this moment to say something that needs to be said more often. To Chief Normandin, job well done. To his department and to Chief Woodson and the police department as well, thank you for your dedication and service to the citizens of Southbridge. I, for one, truly appreciate that, under the most miserable of circumstances, you are there for us. That's all I have this evening. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few announcements. The invitation to bid on the animal shelter construction project has been advertised. The free bid conference and site visit will be held at 10:00 AM tomorrow, actually on Wednesday at 10:00 AM, June 14th. File sub bids are due at 3:00 PM on Thursday, June 22nd, and the prime general contractor bids are due at 3:00 on Thursday, June 29th. The bids for the abatement and demolition of, for 129 Worcester Street were received last week. They're being evaluated by the OPM, and I believe the award will be made shortly. The last thing I have is that we are drafting an RFP for a firm to conduct a cost-benefit analysis on the impacts of creating an enterprise fund for the curbside trash and collection, collection and disposal, including the establishment of the enterprise fund, required bylaw changes and billing procedures, and this will be funded by the Community Compact Best Practice for Energy and Environment Grant. And we hope to get this RFP issued by the end of the week.
Very good. Item number seven, presentations. This evening, we have one presentation. That's an update on 30 Charlton Street. We have the building inspector here, Mr. Julian.
Good evening, Counselors. I had the opportunity to go out to 30 Charlton Street tonight, looked at the repairs. The repairs were done according to the plan from the architect. I also have a letter from the architect engineer stating he was satisfied with the engineer design and buildout of the temporary repair for the steeples. While I was there, he, Mr. Rivera, had taken the opportunity also to take and net in a few other areas of concern that we had that were pretty bad off. So he did go a little above and beyond what he was required to by, by the town. At this point, I would, I, I'm satisfied that it's, you know, substantially going to be held together. I know there was some talk about, you know, whether or not we take down the church. At this point, I don't recommend that we take down the church. We never really set a timeline to the repair on how long we were going to allow the repair to happen. I would back a, you know, if you want to set a timeline to how long we let this repair go on before we look for a permanent solution, I would back that, but at this moment, I'm not ready to take down the church. I feel, you know, he is complying with some, you know, obviously with the repairs, and I'm satisfied with it as of right now.
Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if you were, if we were to consider some sort of a timeline, what do you think would be fair and reasonable for doing something like this?
If you're going to do a timeline, I want to see it before we go into another winter season. I think that would be fair and, and reasonable. You know, we got lucky this winter where it was mild and we didn't have a lot of precipitation. So I feel it certainly helped the situation, but I don't, I don't want to press our lock and go through another winter.
Right. Do you think that this, they, what they've done so far would be able to withstand, say, if we were to get by hurricane or something like that? Because that does occasionally happen, although not often.
Really, the facade separating was due to ice, water getting in and the ice buildup. Would the building withstand a hurricane? I think you're asking me a question that nobody can really tell you the answer to. You know, that's the building as a whole. When you build a structure, all the elements of the structure work together to keep the building together. If part of it fails, could possibly other parts fail at that point? Sure. Could I possibly tell you that? No. I would be reaching to give you a yes or no answer to that.
Okay, that's fair. Do you have any idea what it would cost to do the repairs? Do you think it would be necessary to, to meet the kinds of, to be ready for winter?
No, I do not. I have not talked to anybody as far as a contractor to give us a price to do the repairs. I don't know if Mr. Rivera is here. I don't know if he's reached out to any other contractors who could, you know, maybe he could speak on that behalf as to what the price would be.
Okay. And do you know if there are any plans to go forward with, going beyond this kind of temporary stuff as of right now?
I would again refer that to Mr. Rivera. He has an architect that he's been working with, with, you know, to come up with plans for, I'm assuming, the repair as well as the other buildings that are there. Dave, would you like to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
What was it?
Could you relate? Oh, I was asking, I was asking specifically if you could, if you have a specific, if you have ideas of what you hope to do as far as ongoing repairs to this project now that if it's, now that it's more or less stabilized, where are you going from here?
Now that I'm working with an engineer and an architect, you know, I'm going to be, you know, once he gives me a design, I say in the next month, month and a half, you know, he's on two of the buildings, which is the rectory and the school, something that I have in mind, you know, I'm not going to say what it is yet, but, you know, besides the residential and the rectory, but the school, you know, we're working on something to see if it, if it's feasible.
Okay. What about the church itself, though?
The church.
Yeah, the church itself, that's the big issue.
As we, as stated, you know, I did the repairs, you know, to withhold, you know, anything from falling or anything like that. You know, and the church, I haven't decided what I'm going to do if it's going to be torn down or repaired. It's based on, we're working, I'm working with the engineer to see what possibly can be done with it, you know, without having to knock it down, but if it's too expensive, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to have no problem knocking it down, you know? I just, you know, it's, it's not going to be worth it if it's, if it's gets to be an extent, you know, that's going to, put it this way, not produce any, you know, benefits off of it, you know?
Oh, no, I can totally understand that.
Right, right.
So do you have a rough idea of when you're likely to know?
I'm working on these two buildings first, and I want to do it step by step, you know. I'm not going to, like I, you know, I mentioned before, I'm not tackling the whole project at once. I'm tackling it in stages, and, you know, meanwhile, I'll keep, you know, I'll keep an eye on that church, and I'll keep having them do site visits, you know, as needed to make sure that there is no more, you know, structure that could, you know, cause any facade coming down, you know? But, you know, I want to work on the other two buildings first, and then once I get that up and running, then I'll, I'll decide, you know, I mean, I'll probably decide beforehand what I'm going to do with it before I get these other projects done, the other two buildings, you know?
Okay. I can kind of understand that from, from your perspective of trying to...
I'm just being 100% honest.
Oh, I get, I get that. I appreciate that. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the work you've done.
Right.
I'm glad to see that something is getting done. I'm just, but I am kind of concerned about the fact that that is the danger point, and if it's stable now, that's great, but I'm a little concerned about the fact that going forward, the other, the other buildings are in, don't, don't have a history of falling apart yet with what this one does.
Right, right, absolutely, absolutely. But, you know...
So that makes it a little more of a priority for us, so...
I did the repairs that was needed based on the engineer's report, and now I don't want to just focus on, 100% on that, you know? Like I said, I'm going to keep an eye on it, you know, to make sure it doesn't happen, but, you know, I need to get these other, you know, buildings up and, you know, producing something, you know, because it's just, it's not producing, as you know, you know, it's not producing anything.
Yeah, I understand, that's completely...
It's time to get something rolling there, and, you know, I want to do it, you know? But again, you know, it has to be in stages. You don't want it to be straightforward, you know?
Okay. Have you already, like, applied to the planning board and stuff like that for...
I have, I'm waiting on him to give me my drawings.
Okay.
And then once I do that, I will be doing it. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Counsel Lozo.
With all due respect, I don't think it needs a lot of discussion here tonight. The building inspector said do not tear the church down. I am backing his, his judgment, and at the same time, I would, at the next schedule PPP, to schedule it to set up a timeframe for the plan on the church itself. And this way here, we can have an in-depth discussion at that subcommittee and come up with a recommendation. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Counsel Lozo, not to belabor this, but from my understanding, to pull permits, you have to have updated taxes. How's that coming along? Because it was brought up, updated taxes, pay property taxes?
I'm working on that, and I should be having that, you know, taken care of pretty soon.
Roger that. I know you have to pull permits, and you have permits, you have to be updated with your taxes, so just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair. Your question for the building inspector. Mike, safety-wise, the building's safe right now. What we asked the gentleman to do, he did. The permit's still in force, and the building is safe.
Yes, the building is safe at this point. He did do what we required him to do, and I closed out the permit on the temporary repair tonight. So that permit, because the final inspection has been done. It doesn't mean that we can't keep monitoring it. We can certainly keep monitoring it. All I have to do is list it as a dangerous building, and I can go there to monitor it as much as the town so, so chooses.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Very good.
And I will also keep that temporary fence just for precaution, you know, at all points.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you coming here this evening. Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Item number eight, citizens forum. Are there any citizens that wish to come to the podium this evening to address the council on an item not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's John Pulaski. I'm at 87 Old North Woodstock Road. I'm here tonight to ask you to do a little something that might be helpful and something, was something I think much of the town is supportive of, and that's to have the townspeople through their school committee run our schools. It's not asking much. Some of you had a lot to do with getting it on the ballot, but as we all know, it's The state still has to, they're the deciders here. The council had a vote of no count, no confidence in a past school committee, and shortly after the state took things over. And I didn't think it was a wise decision at the time, but I serve on the Bay Path School Committee, and part of our responsibility is to evaluate our superintendent. Now, this was my second opportunity to evaluate the superintendent, but the state sent us someone to train us on how to do the evaluations. And I asked one of our school committee members if they get to evaluate our superintendent slash receiver, and said, no. She actually laughed. No, they, they don't get to evaluate our superintendent. I think that's unfortunate, whether he's good or not that good, because the state may not really know what's going on here and what's not going on here. So as a measure of solidarity with our Southbridge School Committee, I actually felt, I got a lot of, I went to Marion Hill, I still get plagued with Catholic guilt. I didn't feel right voting when there are people in our school committee have a lot more experience in education, public education than I do. So I explained to my committee that I didn't feel right voting. Plus, we're so happy with our, it was really, it came down to whether we want to give him an A+ or an A for his performance. I think the union wants to give him a B+, but that's beside the point. I don't know what the state will do, even if there's overwhelming support for us to take it back. The state can be a little stubborn sometimes, but, and I don't think this would have to go on your, I don't think it has to be on the agenda, I could be wrong, but since it doesn't require any money or hiring or directing people in the town, I was wondering, maybe during a break, if you folks could consider voting, instead of no confidence in a past school committee, voting, expressing confidence in our current school committee, like what I did. It's just a expression of support for what I think is being on the right track, and many people in town think it's on the right track, taking control of our schools. So with such a vote of support for our school committee, it may be that, just that little bit extra, that may help them realize this town is serious about taking back its schools. That's all I want to say at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to approach the podium to speak to the council about an issue not on tonight's agenda? There being none? Let's move on. Item number nine, vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Theodore Bartlett to the council of aging for a three-year term effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026. State ethics in good standing. Tom.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozo, second by Counsel Ryan. Counsel Montigny?
Thank you. This was recommended favorably at subcommittee.
Any discussion? Counsel, Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have no problem supporting Mr. Bartlett, but we didn't receive anything in our packet for this one, the next one, and the next two after that. I'm just wondering why.
I can't speak to that. I'm not certain.
Okay. Thank you. I know, I know Mr. Bartlett, and I'm sure he's fine.
I know Mr. Bartlett well.
I do think we should have it in our packet always.
I understand what you're saying. Yep. Wait, mate. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 10, vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Evelyn Rivera as municipal hearing officer for a one-year term effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. State ethics in good standing.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counsel Dow. Counsel Steves, I believe this is yours.
Yeah, we approved, we recommended it unanimously.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? I have one opposed, and anyone abstaining? Eight, eight, four, one opposed, Counsel Lozo. Motion passes. Item number 11, vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Anna Smith as the landfill monitor for a one-year term effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. State ethics in good standing. Tom.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozo, second by Counsel Dow. I believe this is Counsel Lozo's.
Recommendation was unanimous. Confirm.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I, I obviously, I'll vote in favor of Anna, but I agree with Counselor Marquetti. I think that we've made it a policy to see these applications or the intent to, to apply for, for these positions. My only concern with Ms. Smith, with these dates here, according to the Casella contract, I believe it takes until the end of March of 2024. I don't believe we added anything in the budget thereafter. I know we're working on that, but should this date be changed to March, last day of March of 2024? Not that we want to, I don't want to get rid of Ms. Smith. She's very valuable to this town in the process that we're going through right now. But, and then reappoint her at that point in time, once we, we have the money, or you take her to 2024 now and just remind her that we don't, we, we still got a budget for this position.
Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have to agree with Counsel Adams, and I know that Mr. Shenier also brought this up at the subcommittee level. So it's probably, it probably would be a good idea to, to make it until March and then revisit it at that time. I actually don't have a problem with Anna Smith as the recycling coordinator, but I don't think we need a landfill monitor anymore, so I'm not sure why we are continuing with that. So if you want to, I'll make that amendment if you want to go there, to, instead of July 1st amended to March 24th, I believe is the last day. I think so.
March 24th?
Yep, I think so.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to amend the date of the appointment through to March 24th, 2024. Motion by Counsel Marquetti, second by Counsel Ryan. Any discussion on the amendment? Counsel Lozo.
Yeah, I don't have a problem amending it to March 24th, as long as the manager explains the dilemma that we're having with the date. And I think the discussion at subcommittee was this position is going to be tweaked before it's over because of the landfill portion of it, and there are other things that we have, like curbside, that's going to be coming on. So I think, given the inspections, time to look at it between now and then, I think it's going to be good all the way around and get a recommendation out of inspections on that health department. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Adams.
Thank you. I agree with Counsel Lozo on this as well. I think it's an easy fix once we start utilizing the flat fee program to build her salary into, into that cost and, and possibly just a job description change. Again, I, I highly, highly respect Ms. Smith, so, and what she does for us. So I look forward to having that future discussion.
Counsel Steves.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, can I go slightly off topic, but it is, it is related? I'll try to be, it's just really, the fact that when we're bringing up Anna's contract, her appointment here, and the issue of paying her by, by way of the Casella contract, we also have issues that I don't think we ever finalized when we were doing the budget cycle with the health director's job and one or two other jobs in that office that are also paid by Casella.
Well, we'll deal with this.
And so we need, so we need to figure, I just wanted to bring up that we need to deal with that, too.
Thank you. We'll deal with this one first, and we'll get to those others in the appropriate time. Very good. Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Sir?
Mr. Chairman?
Just one second. All those against the amendment? I have an eight to one for the amendment to pass. Motion passes to amend to March 24th, 2024. Counselor Montigny against. Pass eight to one. Okay, Mr. Buxton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a quick question to, has there been some calculation about how much amount of time she's spending as landfill monitor presently and how much time as recycling coordinator? And will those hours fluctuate, obviously, as less monitoring is needed?
Counsel Lozo.
If I may, I think our health director is going to hammer the tin on this. I think eventually there is no landfill monitor, so will be no hours on landfill monitor. But going forward, with the curbside pickup and with the other issues we're dealing with, she's on until the 24th, and I think it's going to have to come back to the subcommittee with recommendations of a job change, job description, along with whatever financing needs to be budgeted at that point, which will be a council issue. I hope I answered it.
Thank you.
Counsel Adams.
According to clarification, March 24th of 2024 or March 31st of 24?
Well, I think the contract ends on March 24th.
Done. Good to go. Thank you. That's it.
Anyone else? Very good. We have an amended motion on the floor. Vote to approve the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Anna Smith as the landfill monitor for a term effective July 1, 2023 through March 24, 2024. State ethics in good standing. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 12. Vote to approve the reappointment of Alan Jeski as a constable for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2026.
Second.
Motion by Council Lazlo, second by Council Ryan, Council Lazlo.
Through the chair, the recommendation from subcommittee was unanimous for reappointment.
Any discussion? Council Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So is this a constable or a traffic constable?
Constable.
Constable.
And it's okay, there's no information on this one either, but
I understand that.
I know the PPP subcommittee did recommend this person. So.
We did have the information in subcommittee.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 13. Vote to approve the police chief's recommendation to appoint Tony Theodos as a special traffic constable for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2026.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Council Ryan, second by Council Lazlo. Council Lazlo.
Recommendation through the chair from the subcommittee was unanimous for the appointment.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 14. Vote to approve the police chief's recommendation to appoint Candido Diaz Jr. as a special traffic constable for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2026.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Council Lazlo, second by Council Ryan. Council Lazlo.
The recommendation through the chair from the subcommittee was unanimous for the appointment of Mr. Diaz.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 15. Vote to approve the police chief's recommendation to appoint Rafael Ortiz as a special traffic constable for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2026.
Second.
Motion by Council Lazlo, second by Council Ryan, Council Lazlo.
Through the chair, the recommendation was unanimous. Just like to comment, I know we're, we're rolling through these, but I have to say that the chief vetted this, the chief presented this and spoke to each and every one of these gentlemen or ladies that were qualified for the position. Some of them are coming from the court officers' positions. But I think that the chief did such a good presentation on the information was so good that the, the recommendation on a lot of this is unanimous. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 16. Vote to authorize the town manager to sign pilot agreements that have been revised per the settlement of the ATB case previously approved by town council in settlement of the ATB case.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Council Ryan, second by Council Dow. Mr. Manager?
Uh, yes. My understanding that these documents, as you mentioned, have been revised in order to comply with the agreement you raised with the appellate tax board. So the actual, um, money that we're receiving in personal property taxes is the same as it was before, I understand. But that the changes are now put into the agreement to be consistent with the agreement you made.
Any discussion?
These are brand new pilot agreements. We didn't have pilots with this particular solar company before.
Okay.
Okay. But it is all, um, per the agreement that we had agreed upon before.
Same agreement. Right. Okay. Very good. Council Marketti first, then Council Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good looking over pilot programs. Now, usually these are volunteer programs. Nonprofits, hospitals, schools. These company, um, entities that don't pay taxes. The solar arrays are also, if they're on public land so that the town-owned property, there's no taxes. So then you start a pilot program. But these solar arrays are on private land. And do we know the appraised value of these properties? And how much revenue would we receive in personal property taxes on these properties?
This is in place of a personal property tax, the pilot agreement. But there's a land tax that's separate.
But my question is, do we know how much we would receive instead of the pilot program? Because this isn't a, this isn't tax, well, I don't know if it's tax exempt, but.
No, and, and neither of the ones on the town property, though that land is taxable land.
Right.
Um, even though it's town property. So anyways, um, looking at the numbers in our agreement that we had settled months back, it worked out to be about a break even. I mean, you obviously don't know future tax rates. So it's kind of hard to, to predict, um, fully 100% as it is a break even. But the solar companies prefer to have these pilot agreements in place. It just helps them for stabilization, for budgeting purposes for the future. It's pretty common practice. Every other solar field that we have in town, whether it's on private land or, um, town-owned land, has a pilot agreement in place. It was just these remaining four that did not. Um, and it was only because we couldn't come to an agreement. We held firms of town and got what we wanted, honestly, because they wanted to do way less, which we did not feel was fair. So it took us years to come together with this. It started with Will previous before I was here. Um, and then we finally came to an agreement and it was generally a break even as to what we would charge for regular personal property tax versus the pilot.
Well, the other issue I have is there was a lot of flood damage up there due to these solar panels and on Dresser Hill Road. And when we were, when we asked the company that owned it at the time if they were going to pay for the damages, they, they said, we're not going to pay for the damages. The town signed off on this. So I'd want, I would want them to at least repair the flood damage, especially in some of the problems on some of the residential land. There's still a lot of bills that are owed up there and nobody seems to be addressing that. And also, I think they need to do something to make sure that it doesn't flood again. Because I've gone up there, it doesn't look like it's changed at all. Like it could continue to flood if we have a major, uh, storm. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Council Steves.
I'm thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm inclined to a lot, agree with a lot of what Council Marketti just said. But what jumped out at me with this case is that under normal circumstances, with all of the other pilot agreements, when it gets finalized, we talked about it in executive session. We haven't even seen this in a long time. You know, I mean, yes, I, I understand that we, that you're, uh, the agenda item mentions that we approved it and a years, some time ago. But generally speaking, we, we, they make these changes. We should at least take a look at it so we can get some clarification of what they were before coming out here to vote on them.
What exactly is it that you're talking about? The language of the contract or the numbers?
Well, the numbers.
Because the numbers that we did do, we went, I went to subcommittee and, and this was all negotiated and agreed upon and presented everything. I had spreadsheets and charts and graphs. So I don't know if you remember, it was several months back. So this was all discussed with subcommittee, both subcommittee and, um, council and agreed upon through our, on the ATB settlement. And part of that settlement was agreeing, agreeing to go into a pilot agreement. So these are now the documents that are from that original, um, settlement that we had. But that was fully presented. I, I showed all the numbers. I showed the comparisons when it would be charged as personal property versus as a pilot agreement and everything, so.
So, so then I want to clarify that.
So these pilot agreements are just, you know, they're standard contract language. These have been fully vetted by our council, town council. And they're just, they're very standard contract language. The numbers are what was negotiated during that settlement with you guys.
Okay.
It was.
Have a bit of a problem with the process here.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Hands high. One, two, three, four, five. Those against?
I was in favor.
Five. One, two. Anyone abstaining?
Sorry.
All right. I'm going to call for a roll call on this because I'm not getting a good count. Roll call, please.
Uh, Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Lazlo?
Yes.
Council Marketti?
No.
Council Montigny?
Yes.
Council Ruiz?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steves?
No.
And Council Adams?
Yes.
Seven to two. The motion passes. Item number 17. Contingent upon the final review of town council, vote to accept the contract with Casella for curbside trash and recycling pickup and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Council Ryan, second by Council Lazlo. Mr. Manager?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the agreement for the curbside trash and recycling collection and disposal that was included in the RFP that the town council approved for issuance last February and the fee schedule that was negotiated with Casella. The following is a summary of the process followed by the review committee consisting of Mike Cipione, Vice President of Westman Sampson, Anna Smith, and myself. And Mr. Cipione is here this evening if you have any questions. I believe that he was retained by, uh, former town manager McCall to assist in this process and has been a part of the review committees we move forward. The RFP was issued on February 17th, uh, 2023 with proposals originally due on March 9th. A pre-proposal meeting was held on February 28th. Several questions were received that were answered in an addendum that extended the proposal's submission date to March 16th. On the 16th, only one proposal from Casella was received. We reached out, um, to the other firms that had expressed interest in the RFP and Waste Management submitted a proposal on March 30th. On April 6th, the review committee provided an update to the town council and the recycling subcommittee stating the two proposals that were received had first year costs ranging from 2.1 million to 2.24 million, but had exceptions to the conditions stated in the RFP that would need to be reviewed in order to determine the best option for the town. It was recommended at that time that the town budget for a first year cost of 2.35 million, which was the high end of the range and included a 5% contingency. On April 24th, the town council voted unanimously to approve the recommendation of the curbside trash study committee to adopt a flat fee charge for the trash and recycling and to establish an enterprise fund. Further review of the proposals was completed on April 17th with the estimated, uh, cost proposals at that time being nearly equal and Casella was selected for negotiation of a final contract. If this failed, then the process would allow for a negotiation with the next firm. Uh, the following chart shows the savings resulting from the final agreement negotiated with Casella. You can see that the first year, uh, original proposal was 2.2, well, 2,233,631. The revision that was negotiated finalized on, uh, uh, May 25th was, uh, 2,166,6961, a savings of 660,670. And then the five-year, um, uh, contract cost with the escalation was reduced by 346,953. And I think it's important to note here that one of the big things on this was the agreement to be consistent with the 2% recommendation or request that we had in the original proposal. Uh, in addition, since Waste Management's proposal included the cost of leasing trucks for approximately six months until new trucks were available and could be, uh, obtained, as well as the cost of providing new recycling carts, the estimated savings with this agreement over five years compared to Waste Management's initial proposal is 635,958, uh, dollars and 49 cents. And one of the things on that is that when the RFP was originally, uh, put out, there was no mention of the carts. I, I believe the, uh, understanding we had was that the town owned both the trash and the recycling carts. But actually, uh, research later on showed that Casella actually owned the recycling carts. And so obviously to go to another vendor, we would have to expect that we'd have to, you know, pay for new carts. So, um, my recommendation or request is that, uh, you approve this agreement contingent upon final review by town council for form.
Council Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So actually, I'm quite surprised that the town council would even consider signing another contract with Casella concerning the history that we've had with this company. I know back in 2007, town signed a contract extension with Casella and they made a lot of promises to the town. 108 million in income and benefits, 20-year free curbside collection, 20-year lifespan capacity of the landfill, and the town would be released from landfill liability. We were promised future jobs in Southbridge, which never happened. We were promised free curbside collection for 20 years. Ms. Harnoy stood up there, presented the contract to the, between the town and Casella. Pickup would continue until 2027. She also outlined the money we would be receiving in the agreement a little over 3 million per year. We were promised the recycling bank presented by James Bolick, president of Casella, and that ended soon after Casella's, the contract was finalized. We had the access road, a plan for a planned industrial park, which has never happened. Casella even offered to pay for the road. But as it turns out, the town negotiated, negotiated a $300,000 reduction in royalty payments to pay for the road. So the town paid for the road. Casella did not pay for the road. As far as the 20-year lifespan capacity at the landfill, this was presented by Bruce Haskell and James Bolick. Yet in 2013, Casella came back to the council and announced the landfill was also almost full. And that made former councillor Kathy Nicola utter those famous words. I don't care how you whitewash it, we were not told the truth. As far as the liability, the town, they told us the town would not be liable for anything at the landfill until the residential well contamination. And then Casella changed their tune. In 2016, John Casella wrote a letter to Senator Han Goby. And he said, if the landfill is the source of the contamination, it's coming from the online cell run by the town. So Casella threw the town under the bus. As for the contamination, for years, Casella reported to the residents on Barefoot Road that there were no problems with their water, drinking water. But then the Board of Health, the Southbridge Board of Health was showing that there was contamination. Mass DEP got involved and they, they said contamination was coming from the landfill. And then the town spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees to fight the lawsuits from those contaminated wells. Finally, a water line to Barefoot Road was built, was ordered by the state. The state would pay half, Casella would pay half. But Casella would not agree to the, to the deal unless Southbridge, probably the poorest community in Massachusetts, agreed to borrow the money for Casella. We had a gas to energy program. The town would receive 150,000 per year. I asked Ms. Harnoy's before she left, how much have we been receiving? She said 85,000 per year. There have been plenty of environmental disasters up there, landslides, contamination, a 2015 explosion where they used a foam retardant, which contains a lot of those PFAS that everybody is talking about. And then finally, in 2017, Casella had an expansion plan and they put a petition on the ballot. And they wanted the Southbridge Airport. I joined with a group of residents, including Council Steves and Council Ryan, and we fought that petition. Whereas Casella spent about $100,000, we spent about $8,000, and in the end, we prevailed. And the residents voted 60% not to allow expansion. After the vote, Casella announced the landfill was closing, and said the landfill was full, 10 years short of the 20-year promise on that landfill capacity. So let's, let me think here. Ms. Harnoy said 3 million per year, times 10 years, that equals about 30 million, not 109. So then, Casella reneged on the curbside agreement. They ended the 20-year contract, and the town spent thousands of dollars on legal fees suing Casella to force them to honor the contract. Curbside ends next year, three years short of the 10-year, of the 20-year ironclad contract. So after all this history with Casella, the tall tales and broken promises, the money we received that we didn't receive, throwing us under the bus, reneging on the 2007 contract, and you still want to sign a contract, another contract with Casella? And as I've said many times before, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. We signed a contract in 2007, they reneged on it. Casella cannot be trusted to honor any more contracts in this community. So I say this contract is not worth the paper it's printed on, and I urge the councilors to vote no on Casella. I don't care how much Waste Management is charging us, they've never reneged on a contract with the town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other councils? As a citizen, do you wish to address?
Yes, Kevin Buxton, 149 Everett Street. Twice, a member of the Curbside Advisory, with the first one and the second one. Mr. Marketti just laid out the history, and I'm sad to say, it sorrows me because I had to live through a lot of that as well. I wasn't expecting this subject tonight. I was expecting a more positive thing. But I do need to express the fact that, too quick, too soon. Anna Smith worked through the town manager's office to negotiate details of curbside. I give her high credit to her time as landfill monitor. I was on landfill oversight. Landfill monitoring was part of our oversight. She was on our committee, as a matter of fact. Since the landfill stopped taking trash, she has become an important part of the health department. But her and the town manager product, meaning this RFP, has not been viewed by concerned citizens. I want to, I wanted you to understand, I know a single concerned citizen does not run this town. I know a concerned citizen does not run this council or control the chair. But when negotiations come up like this, the final product, I'm not saying we need to sit in private meetings with the town manager and the, but the final product needs to be given a period of time for citizens to review it, including citizens like myself. I'm not a landfill or curbside expert, but I tell you, over the years, I've followed every single aspect of this. But I'm going all the way back to 1996. In 1996, when Florence Chandler was going to sign the contract with Wood Recycling, all I asked the council for was a little more time for citizens to look it over. Thank you.
Mr. Palowski, do you wish to address?
Steve says something.
All right, Council Rivers?
So I have heard from residents who have expressed similar concerns to Council Marketti. And I think that he makes some valid points. I think that it is something for us to be cautious about, and I am wondering, what are some mechanisms that, if this is a contract that we want to consider, what are some parts that maybe town council can, can put into sort of the contract or some safeguards so that history doesn't repeat itself? Or, I don't know, are there any mechanisms besides rejecting? And I know that this was the lowest bid, you know, and that is also something to consider. But it is something that residents are very concerned about, so.
Council Steve.
I know that when it comes to curbside collections, that's technically not subject to 30B. But on the flip side, I think going through the process, as long as it's public, and I completely agree with, with what Mr. Buxton said, and, and agree with what Mike said, because, I mean, we were there together, we were also that nonsense back then. And I think that this, this is a situation, first of all, where we haven't even, as a council, haven't even vetted this property. I mean, it has not gone to subcommittee. At the very least, it needs to go down to general government, really debate it. These kinds of contracts, this is also a contract that we haven't, again, we haven't seen it in executive session. Contracts like this usually go through there at some point, one or the other. And, you know, I, and while, while we do have to be concerned about cost, and I see that your comments here about the Waste Management initial proposal differing, differing by 635 grand, I can see that they would be able to negotiate that down as well, as, as your numbers show in what we did with Casella. However, I am entirely inclined to agree with Council Marketti about not trusting these people, because, you know, we have a long-term future that we need to be focused on in our community, and quite frankly, I don't really want them part of it. And I understand that their system is, is already kind of in place, and it would be maybe easier for us to do it, but I would really rather see us do it right.
Council Dow.
Thank you, Chair through you. I respect Council Marketti, Council Steve. I think they're right, but contra was signed in a pass. It was no penalty, was no correct information. Whatever sign and approve in a pass, it wasn't done right.
I agree.
Now, I think it's a black and white. And I think, what, what I'm trying to say here is, we're going to save money on the containers for the residents. And the, I think we've been going on almost two year and a half, three years, studied this to get to this point, and we don't have too much time anymore. I think four, three and a half year, four year almost, to get to here. And we wait to the last minute, and then we jump in the river. We don't, like, where we are before, when, when Council Adam was on that and trying to negotiate, it failed, because we got a new board of health, you want to get everything new and fresh, and now we fighting it again. I guess we're missing, as a council, why we don't attend to those meetings and negotiate it behind the scene, to wait to the last minute to come up here in front of the camera and start, you know, looking good. And I understand everybody's concern, but the contra in a pass, it was dirty, and we all know that. But this time, I think we're all aware what Casella did, and we're trying to save money for the residents and the town of Southbridge. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Council Montigny.
Thank you very much. I tend to agree with what Council Dow is saying. I can't really recall anything terrible happening since the landfill has closed. I think it was a lot easier for there to be, to use his words, a dirty contract when they're using our own landfill, but now it goes somewhere else. And I don't see a problem, I, I don't want to go with somebody that's more expensive, and then people decide, well, now we're getting close to privatizing and going, opting out of all these different people. The more people that opt out, the price gets even higher. Casella already knows what they're doing here, and, like I said, without the landfill in the Southbridge operating, they seem to have been fine for almost six years. That's just my thoughts, but thank you.
Council Alazo.
I think Council Marketti has given an accurate history lesson. You have to take that seriously. I, I, I was torn when it started. I have more of a landfill history than most. I go back to when we ran it as a town, and it was all profit for us, and it was only us using it. The sale of it and changed the channel and made Wood Recyclers the people in charge of the landfill. And then when Wood Recyclers ready to go belly up, one of our town managers signed a contract, when it was in breach of contract, to give it to Casella to buy out Wood Recycling. That was a mistake, and that's why when you appoint a town manager and you have a council, that you have to be all on the same page on how you handle these contractual issues. Moving forward, I'm going to be voting in favor of this tonight, even with that dark cloud in the back of my mind of the contract dealings that we had. One, they know the town, they're already embedded with all of the, the recycling, and they have the land up until, the landfill that they own that they could go into a transfer station, which I think is a second step, once this curbside pickup is put in place. We had some residents call some of the other trash companies, and they were much more expensive than Casella. And I think that the way I'm going is, I want a cost-effective solution to curbside pickup. I've been on, and for four years, we've been kicking the can down the road. Well, thanks to some good counselors and some managing, from the town manager, we have moved forward, and we've got to the crossroad, where the barn is not burning down and we don't have to hurry up. We actually got it done. We're going to get it done. That's the reason why I want to get it done here tonight and put it behind us. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Regarding Council Rivers' question about the contract itself, I know that originally, I, I believe that Anna Smith and former Town Manager McCall began working on this contract as far as using other contracts from other communities. And when they brought Mr. Cipione in, he has an expertise in that area. He helped them develop this contract and put in those kind of safeguards. So if you would approve, I'd like to have Mr. Cipione come in, at least discuss what some of the safeguards are in this particular contract.
Thank you. There are several things that are in the contract. There's liquidated damage clauses that if Casella does not abide by the contract, you hold back money on them, and you don't pay them for it, it's a penalty that would be signed on. And there's also a performance bond as part of this contract, which would allow you to pull the bond if there's issues associated with that through their bonding company. Those are the, probably the major safeguards in there.
Thank you. Council Marketti.
I'll yield to Council Ryan.
Okay, Council Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I appreciate the thoughts and sentiments shared by some Council Marketti and Council Steves. I had those very same concerns myself when I saw this name come up. Having had dealt with what has happened in the past and working with the two of you on getting the landfill closed in the first place, I, I, I had my concerns. But I also understand the other side of, this is saving $600,000 from the next competitive option. I want to make sure that this place is affordable, and what's going to end up happening when these flat fees start getting added on is it's going to be added to people's rents. That's just the reality of it. So, once landlords start absorbing this cost, it's going to be on renters, and I can't, in my mind, I can't justify going over 600,000 more for somebody else. I think it's also important that while we're doing this first contract period, that we keep a really good eye on this company, and that we make sure that there is no more, to be blunt, game-playing happening. But I think with the cost savings, I think it's worth it to go forward with the company that's already ingrained here in town. And then as we go forward, if issues come up, this council direct and address them immediately as they come up, and not letting things build up to the point where they were when Casella was running the landfill. So, I will be supporting this tonight.
John?
John Palowski, same address. Thank you for your litany of bumps in the road that occurred over that time. I respectfully disagree with you, Council Dow, in that we actually had, had a hard time admitting it myself, because I was opposed to the switch from construction and demolition to municipal solid waste from anywhere. But the problem wasn't the contract. The contract was pretty good. It was prepared, it's kind of funny, because I was opposed to what the man was doing, but I respected him. He was a gentleman that is a partner in the law firm of Copelman and Page. His name was John, I believe was his first name, Giorgio. The problem is that we let them walk all over us for the whole time. And Councilor Montigny, I respectfully disagree with you when you say nothing's happened since they closed the landfill, because, and they didn't really close it, the DEP did, even before the election. They weren't going to let them proceed. The problem is that we got, we volunteered, we were consenting adults, the council was. We gave away millions of dollars worth of services that were in that contract, millions of dollars. And in fact, no one wanted to listen to me. I joke around with friends, I hope I never arrive here, I tend to arrive late. I hope I never arrive here with, God forbid, a fire downstairs, because if I came up here and told you folks that the town hall was on fire, four of you may sit here and not leave the building, not believing. I just, please, I've heard this term, if you ever, ever do it, do it tonight, due diligence. Now, what would due diligence mean here? I hate to say it, I'd love to tell Casella to take a hike if I was up there with you, but I wouldn't. I wouldn't. That million dollars, that looks like a good price. I'm very concerned about the recycling. 135 a ton? Who knows what the price is? It's open, and the more we recycle, it discourages, I mean, some people aren't going to want to recycle, it's going to cost the town money. So it's kind of like buying a hamburger for a dollar and finding out that the ketchup is two bucks. What could we do? We can't put this off much longer, but we can put it off a couple months, but we don't even need to do that. I spoke to Mr. Giorgio around the time the town...
Just a minute, please. Counsel?
Motion to extend.
Second.
Motion by Council Adams, second by Council Alazo. All those in favor?
Thank you. I called Copelman and Page. It was around the time I was running for council, and for some reason, I think he thought I was a counselor, so I spoke with Mr. Giorgio briefly. As soon as he heard I wasn't a counselor, he's like, oh, John, you're not an elected official, I shouldn't discuss this. But he guaranteed, pretty much guaranteed in that conversation, that he could ensure that that original contract be honored, that we get those millions. So I shared that information with some people in town government. Nothing happened, I don't know if they called him, but I believe we do use Copelman and Page. Are you, are you with Copelman and Page? Okay. This is no criticism of your skills, what I'm about to say. I want to be clear about that. But John Giorgio kind of created this. He's the author. It's like being able to go to Thomas Jefferson on a constitutional question. It would be worth the money to invite him. I see if, when you vote on this, then we're going to go to a lawyer for approval? Let's hire Mr. Giorgio to go through this, possibly even, and I'm sure the town manager and Ms. Smith negotiated very well, but he may be able to negotiate even better. Maybe we can get a few years off. Maybe we can continue a few years to get what we were promised in the first contract. This isn't fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. This is fool us 30 times, shame on us if we just sign, because it's cheaper. It might not be. That's one issue, the 135 a ton. And there's other things, too. I couldn't get my laptop to work last night, so I had to read this on a cracked cell phone. But we can do better. They want the contract. There's issues, I couldn't, I didn't find it in there, maybe it's in there, but does this mean we're going to let them have a commercial transfer station? Or are we going to have a transfer station of our own, like Thompson, Woodstock, Dudley, Sturbridge? These are things, I don't know if it's, I don't even know if it's in there. But there are more details, and Mr. Giorgio, he's done more than one landfill contract or town pickup track. And I think if we, I mean, for the price of, you know, it's just, I can't imagine it not being worth our while to really, especially... being worth our while to really, especially with the litany that Mr. Marketti shared, to dot our i's and cross our t's, to make sure they're done right. There's no, there's no need to rush. There's no need to rush at all. So thank you for your time, thank you for extending my time, but please, due diligence. We can still do it by the Fourth of July.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you, John. I just want to ask Counselor Marketti, where he been when what you said, we give him away a million dollars? He was on a council in the past and Counsel Steves. That's, they've been on more than six years. And I think the gentleman here qualifies very well. It's a liquid damage, it's a penalty, and the old contra is not there. It is what's there, the contra. Where you been four years to discuss the contra, you don't speak up, you're concerned. Or other counselors now, they're trying to say this contra, it's not correct, or they're afraid of Casella. If you do the right thing and you make sure it's correct and a penalty, nobody's gonna be afraid from nobody, from no one, Casella or other. We're looking to save money for the town. The past is the past. We learn from the past and we fix and we move forward. I believe we did get a different prices from different carriers, it was more money. Just because we did mistake in the past, we don't protect ourselves, doesn't mean we cannot move with the same carrier and we protect ourselves and we save money. You're looking 346 plus 630, almost a million dollars in here. I'm gonna support this tonight. I understand your concern, I agree with you, but this is something else. And we make sure we protect the town and the residents, and I'm one of them. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Can I ask a question through?
No, you've had your time, please.
Because I can answer, we gave away millions.
I'd like to move on to discussion with the counselors and the manager. Mr. Manager and then Counsel Montigny.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you know, there's been a lot of discussion here about the overall cost. And one thing I would like to point out, both, you know, to the community really and to the council, is that you've already taken the big step as far as saving money for the community. I mean, the fact that you're committed to going to curbside collection is really where the big savings comes from. Mr. Cipione has been dealing with a lot of these contracts for communities all over, and this is a very competitive price. The price per household with this is in the order of $250 a year. If you go to individual private collection, where I live in Sturbridge, and I have a carrier that picks up my trash and my recycling, I pay over $700 a year for that, and I don't get curbside leaf disposal, which is in this contract. So this is a very competitive contract. It's a very good contract for Southbridge. I understand your concerns about what happened with Casella, and that's a branch of Casella that, you know, handles the landfill. I know it's the same company, but in my short time here and in talking to people that have been involved in this, I haven't heard a lot of complaints about the actual curbside collection. And I just, you know, want to make it clear that the big accomplishment here is having the town committed to curbside collection. That's where your big savings is coming in.
Very good, Counselor Montigny.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate Mr. Palowski's comments. You know, being the cable station manager here for a while, I was able to learn a lot, especially about the landfill. Mr. Palowski used to come up a lot more often, and I got to hear a ton of different perspectives at the time. As a department head, we used to have department head meetings every two weeks, and we would talk about certain things. And one of the things that we started to talk about towards the end of my time was that we were going to run out of the contract in 10 years, right? It wasn't supposed to be 2026 or '07. And then all this stuff ended up happening. And, you know, we tried to say that we need to start doing things now, back in 2014, '15, to prepare for what's coming. And I thought that was a great idea. You know, I left in 2016, stopped paying attention, and then all of a sudden, they kick the landfill out, there's six years left, and I come here on council now, and I was surprised when I landed how little work had been done to prepare for the money that isn't coming into the town anymore. Not to prepare for the RFPs and everything, that was all very good work done by the committees, but just to your point, and you said you disagree, but to your point about the counselors that would sit here in a burning building in councils past, I would tend to blame them for the lost millions than Casella at that point. That's just me, though. But I do thank you for always having a voice on this because it's important that we see it from all perspectives. I'm still inclined to vote yes, though, at the moment, so thank you.
Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For one thing, I would like to say that, first off, to go to one of Counselor Dow's points, is that neither Counsel Marketti nor me were part of the actual signing of that contract that predates us by several years. It predates me by at least seven, six, rather, six. And, but anyway, my concern about this, and I think, and I think you're, what the manager pointed out, is true, that we do need to make a bit of a distinction between the landfill and the fact that, the fact that we had, over the years, we've had the kind of combination of both curbside and landfill all tied together, created a big, a huge mess for our town, and that should really have never been put together in the first place. But I think what we need to be doing going forward is, while, while we do need to be making sure that we get the best prices we can, I am still inclined to think that why would we want to be doing business with somebody that we know has done what they've done to our town over the years? And I think it, I would really like to see us take some time to send this back to subcommittee so we can actually go through the contract and send it to our council before we vote on it. Why would we vote on it before coming to council? That makes no sense at all. So I would like to make a motion that we send it down to gen.gov review and send it to council before it comes back up here.
Second.
A motion by Counsel Steves and a second by Counsel Rivas to move this motion down to gen.gov and-
And send it to council before it comes back up to council. Send it to our town attorneys before it comes back up to full council. Clarify what I'm referring to.
Motion and a second. Counsel Lozlo.
Speaking to the motion to refer back to subcommittee, I am usually an advocate of subcommittee. I don't know what subcommittee can do differently than what we're doing. This gentleman here is not exactly the rookie. This is what he does, this is what he knows. When he starts talking about bonds, I know what that is. I'm in construction. You do a job, you have a bond, you mess it up, the bond covers the damage. You go after the bond. There are other safe yields in the contract, I don't know if anybody else read it, in its lengthy. But to me, we've been kicking this can down the road for four years. We're at a crossroad now. If you think you're gonna get a better deal, when someone tells me Sturbridge is paying over 700 without a leave pickup, and you look at what we're getting in our deal, why would you want to go back down to subcommittee unless you just don't want, you don't like the supplier of the service? Which I get, and I respect it. I'm in business, I've had some bad dealings with companies, and then I go back and all of a sudden, they treat you much better. Running the landfill was a different battle than providing a service of pickup. And that's why I feel comfortable going back with Casella for the numbers that they plugged in and with the safe yields that this gentleman has put in and the work that's been negotiated. I mean, shame on us if we do not hold the feet to the fire on this contract. We need to be, as you say, due diligence. We need to, we need to verify, we need to do this. And I think this is, I think numbers-wise, this is a good deal. Contract-wise, you're gonna delay it. What do you want to delay it for? We've been delaying it for four years. If I thought there was something really seriously wrong with the document, I would be in favor of referring. I would be voting no on refer. Thank you.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Completely opposed to wasting another month, two months, three months, going back to general gov. I'm gonna call it what it is, general gov doesn't push really too much through, and we're gonna have multiple conversations over and over again about the same thing. I presented, when I was the curbside collection chair, I sat up there three or four times in the town council from 2019 to 2020 with what the committee had recommended, which was contract. I said, "Town council, now it's your responsibility to figure out how we're gonna pay for it and what the process is gonna be." That was three, four years ago, and no action was taken then. Now we want to delay this even more. I trust the interim town manager, our town manager right now, with the negotiations. I understand that you've had quite a few conversations to negotiate this down with the experts here and there, which I completely support, but I'm talking about this delay again and again and again. You might as well just call it what it is. You don't want it, so what we'll do is we're gonna do independent contracting. Good luck with that one with nine months to educate the public on how to get that done. That's what's gonna happen. I'm gonna tell you right now, it's gonna happen that way. And if waste management wanted to be part of this solution, they would have had their RFP in on time, and we didn't have a counselor or others calling on the town's behalf, begging them to come in and provide an RFP. We're here now. We have a solution here. I'll discuss if this goes down or not, some other, the points that I was gonna make, but gotta stop the delays. My lord, it's right here, black and white, what we're doing. I'll just wait until, see how this motion goes, then I'll vent on the other end.
We have a motion to refer. Any further discussion on the motion to refer? Counsel Rivas.
I think, and while I appreciate, I wasn't part of 2019, so I'm here now. I, I don't think it does, I don't think it harms us to give citizens another opportunity, whether that is, you know, waiting till council reviews the contract and giving citizens another opportunity to talk to us about how they feel, what they, what they would want us to do. I don't think it's that harmful to just wait to another meeting, whether it goes to subcommittee or to postpone to the next council meeting until it is reviewed. I would feel better about voting for it if I hear from our council that has reviewed the contract. And I do appreciate Mr. Cipione's review, and that does help answer the questions that I had. But I would feel better voting for it, just hearing that our council reviewed the contract at the very least. And I, I don't see the harm of it going back to subcommittee because it does give citizens another opportunity to come forward and talk about it. That's really, I think, the only reason that it should go back down, just to give residents another opportunity to, to talk to us a little bit more about their thoughts, so.
Counsel Adams, then Counsel Dow.
So Counsel, I completely understand where you're coming from. We had a curbside committee that we never said, "You have to go to general gov." They went straight to the town council every single time. So where is that subcommittee right now that should be recommending to us what the RFPs were? What's the outcome now? Where was that? So now we're gonna take it to another subcommittee, bring it back to another subcommittee, have another conversation about it, when that subcommittee that we formed was supposed to info the residents, the town council, everybody? And so then, ask that question, now we're, we're at the 12th hour, and we're making, we want to make changes to send it back down somewhere. I think it's just wrong, and, and that's just my opinion.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Chair, through you. My concern is more time we wait, the price more up we go. If we negotiated two years ago, I think the price will be more or less from now. Same like everything else. Economy's going up, price is going up, and my concern is to lose that contra by waiting again and again, and we keep doing the same circle for the last four years. Thank you.
Counsel Lozlo.
I really, really understand Counsel Rivas being, just getting on council. I remember when I first got on council, my head was spinning with so much information and things going on that you would want to take a second look at it to be on the safe side. But in this process that they created with the curbside committee, they became the subcommittee of trash. It didn't go, usually trash goes DPW, you know, back in the day. It was run through the DPW. And by creating the trash committee, you circumvented council subcommittee, you're getting a direct recommendation to the council. I don't know where that committee is tonight. Now, when you turn around and say, okay, we have a town manager search committee, you're gonna, there's a search committee that comes directly to us, doesn't go to a subcommittee. And this is the concept that we're working within right now, and that's why a motion to refer right now is not gonna make it any better. I don't think it's, all it's gonna do is hold up the process again. And I, I, as a council, I hope that you respect me as well as I respect you. I've been here a little longer as far as kicking the can down the road, and I remember exactly, I would get down to a meeting, I go, "What did we just do?" Postpone, postpone, postpone. I mean, we had enough postponements, we set a record. But moving forward, I feel comfortable with the numbers. I feel comfortable with the contract and the concept of curbside. And then when you hear from your own town manager what the cost is in another town and what the cost savings is at that town, and we're getting more service for it, that makes me feel even more comfortable. Yes, it's Casella. They know our town trash-wise better than anybody. And I'm gonna go with that and stick with that, and then also, as long as I'm on the council, is holding your feet to the fire of the contract. Thank you.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I was the chairman of the curbside garbage collection, and our, our charge was not to decide who was going to pick up our trash. Our charge was how are we gonna pay for it? But I will tell you that we did ask former town manager McCall on several occasions to come to us with his RFP on the curbs, on the contract. And he, he is the one who kept delaying it and delaying it and delaying it. So it's unfair to blame it on this curbside garbage collection committee. We did make our report, we recommended what type of plan we wanted, but it wasn't our charge to pick the, the contract, to pick the company that was gonna pick up our trash. So that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Counsel Lozlo.
With all due respect, I am not blaming the curbside committee. I think they did a spectacular job. I'm blaming the council. Sorry, I'm gonna look in the mirror and say, another month, another year. Not the curbside committee. Curbside committee did their deed, they came forward and they pushed it forward. Whether it be the manager or the council, that's where I think it lies. Not on the curbside committee. I'm sorry if somebody misunderstood. I, I think they did a great job. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to move this along. I haven't heard from Counsel Ryan yet, so please, Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I understand Counsel Rivas' points, and they're very well made. We're at the point, though, that we've been kicking this for a while. We're well beyond where we should have made this decision. We should have made this decision last year. Here we are, finally making the decision. I understand the frustrations, I understand the questions, I understand how, how can you have faith in a company that you have felt has wronged you? I understand that. That's why it's really important over this first year that it be viewed by the council as a trial period, to make sure that they're doing it right. If they mess up, it's on us to make sure they, they get their butts in line, or we go to another hauler. I think to delay this any further would risk the, risk the loss of this trash collection program we're setting up. And I don't want to go to independent hauling. That's not an option for Southbridge, it will not work. So I'm going to oppose the point to move this back to subcommittee, not because I don't think the point's valid, but because I think at this point, we just don't have any more time.
Counsel Steves, then Counsel Adams.
My point as far as proposing to send it back, I'm not talking about debating it for a year. I'm talking about bringing it back up by the end of the cycle, at the end of this month, the next, next meeting. Give us a chance to, and get the, get, how long would it take, if I can ask a quick question to the manager, how long would it take to get a response from our town- How long would it take to get a response from our town council, having them review the contract? Because we, we, I agree with Counsel Ryan that we do need to get this done quickly. I mean, and I do agree that we have been, it has been dragging out for a long time. And I'm also completely in favor of the idea of having it be a curbside system because I agree that anything else probably would not work. I would like to see it have some sort of a pay-as-you-throw part to it, if we can get that to work. But, you know, that's what we need. And I agree, that's what we voted on. That's what we, so.
Counsel Steves, you have a question for the manager?
Yes, I did. Sorry.
Please.
Okay, if I may respond. So I assume Counsel Steves, you're talking about having them only review the contract document that was in the RFP. We're not talking about having them review the prices of the contract or anything like that. That's not their role. Their role would be simply to review this contract. Is that correct?
Well, basically, that's what, that's what they would be doing to make sure it adequately protects, protects the town, that we would be able to enforce it, that we would be able kind of to go along to one of Counsel Ryan's points, that we would be able to discipline violations and stuff like that.
So in other words, if I may, this request that we have is to authorize me to sign this subject to their review. And so I, I think we have, hopefully have trust in our town council that they will review this, you know, relatively standard document, certainly modified, you know, by Mr. Cipio's expertise and dealing with a lot of other communities. But I mean, you, you look through here and basically, you know, it, it's a, it's a, it's got quite a few pages.
Oh, yeah.
But a lot of the pages, you know, define what recycling is. It defines different roles. It defines who the health director is and what responsibilities they have.
I get that.
You know, these are not breakthrough concepts. And so I would think that they could review it in a short, you know, period of time. But on the other hand, it depends on their workload. We've already got Katie Klein, as you saw from your earlier meeting here, tied up with three or four other things. I know that PEG made a request for her today on something else, said, "I'll try, but we're very busy." So all I'm trying to say is whatever you expect to get from town council to review on this, we will get, you know, before I sign this. And, and again, I, I just feel that the document, or I should say the agreement, is, is well vetted. It, it has good input from somebody that we, you know, paid money to represent us based on his expertise. And so I can't tell you when they'll do it, but I can say that if you go ahead and vote for this request, that work will be done before we sign it. I sign it.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that's what my point was, that all of a sudden we talked about, let's do, I'd like to see some more pay-as-you-throw in there. Again, delays, delays, delays. Move the question.
Second.
We have a move, we have a motion to move the question?
The amendment.
The amendment.
We have thirty seconds.
We have, we have a request to move the question, which is the referral to general government and to a town attorney. Voting yes means that you want to refer. Voting no means you don't want to refer. Roll call vote.
No, Mr. Chairman. Voting yes means you want to move the question.
Yes.
This is a move. Sorry. All right. Yes means you move the question. No means you don't move the question.
Parliamentary inquiry.
There's no debate.
There's no debating on this. There's no debating this.
Parliamentary inquiry.
There's no debate.
I'm not debating. I'm asking a parliamentary inquiry. Did the first and the second part of the motion?
There's a yable there. We have a motion and a second. There's no debate.
You can't debate a motion.
The motion.
Mr. Buxton, please.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to move the question. If you vote yes, the question will be moved. If you vote no, the question will not be moved. Roll call vote on the move the question.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Lozo.
Yes.
Counselor Marketti.
Yes.
Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Oh, sorry. Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Finally, not me, Dave.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
And Counselor Daniels.
Yes. Okay. The question is moved. So we have a motion on the floor to refer to general government and to the town attorney. Any further discussion on that motion? Counselor Adams.
Since I didn't speak the last time this motion was coming up, I just want to go over a couple of things. As I explained earlier, 2019, 2020, multiple presentations at the town council. I do understand where Counsel Marketti, Counsel Steves, Counsel Ryan, and many others are up here about Casella because that is the perception of Casella right now in our view. But we are talking about curbside collection and not landfill. That landfill is gone and void. If, we can't always sit there and blame Casella for our misgivings as the town council taking royalty funds and misappropriating and utilizing budgets, operational budgets, instead of in lowering the tax rate instead of utilizing for infrastructure projects.
We have point of order.
The question was moved.
The question was moved. There's no discussion?
Yeah. It's done.
We're going to vote on the amendment now.
I'm like, why are we having more discussion?
I have all these notes. I'm done.
All right. We have a motion to refer to general gov subcommittee and to the town attorney. Voting for the motion means that it will move down. It'd be referred down. Voting against the motion means that it does not get referred down. Roll call vote.
Counselor Lozo.
No.
Counselor Marketti.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny.
No.
Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
No.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
Counselor Adams.
No.
Counselor Daniel.
No.
Counselor Dow.
No.
Six votes nay, three votes yea. The motion is not referred to general government.
Mr. Chairman, can we recognize the citizen? They had a little bit of frustration. Let them talk for us before us.
Yes, absolutely. Now that we're back to the original motion, no problem. Okay. Mr. Palowski.
I'm really disappointed. This is, what, it's going to be $10, $15 million, this contract? It didn't even see the light of a town subcommittee. I don't think, this is, this is a historical moment in town council history. $15 million approximately, when you take into consideration the expensive recycle. Used to be we got money for recycling. Now we're going to pay $150. I'll tell you, ladies and gentlemen, I've spent, I'm not exaggerating. There's a woman I lived with for 18 years that left me over this. She claimed I spent 5,200 hours, 5,200 hours on this. And she might be, I was reading the, studying the reports on the gases. I know more about landfills. I still have nightmares about them. But I, Counselor Dow, you made some comments that really got my Irish up. People think I'm Polish. I'm half-Irish. People did make comments. I tried making them at some of the committee, the subcommittee meeting. I was gabbed down one time. And the cheapest alternative has yet to be explored. Scott, you and I grew up in a town where a town employee showed up at the house with a truck and a robotic arm and took our trash away to the landfill. We have a landfill in Sturbridge, a landfill in Charlton. Our landfill was closed and part of it was sealed except for one cell. There's room for another seven to 10 years. Now, I know there's probably not a person on this committee that wants to take the half-million-dollar option. At one of the subcommittee meetings, I heard a price of $800,000 for a truck. But I looked into it a bit last night. I couldn't sleep because this was coming. You can get a two-year-old truck for about $225,000. In other words, for the cost of one year, we could get the trucks and hire local town people to pick up our waste. And yeah, there's going to be bumps. There would be problems at first. But we didn't even look at that option. You would think this was needham. "Oh, our DPW, they can't touch the trash. They can't handle the waste." Now, we have, I don't want to get into all the issues, but I, I don't know why that option was never looked at. And that's why I gave Jack Jovan a hard time when he pigeonholed this process by calling it a curbside committee, when we needed to look at the whole picture, more than just the curbside. So we've wasted years, all those committees, but we were prevented from the best solution. I, I, I didn't like what happened to those committees. So I was told, "Don't worry about it. You can talk about it in subcommittee." But no, I can't talk about it in subcommittee. There's things I don't want to say before the whole town because it creates that dark negative attitude in town that I don't like. And it just would be repeated and won't serve any function. But do not be shocked if this process is slowed up even more because you guys didn't want to take a two-week, two-week extension. Two weeks! Let the next elected people choose. You may find that someone has the free time to pick up the 675, I think, signatures are required to put this on the ballot. You want, you know, this is why I liked the idea of town meetings before. Things like this happen. This can go on the ballot. I, I was taking odds. I, I, I think there's a good chance this is going to go to the ballot. Doesn't take much to put it on the ballot. You don't want to give two weeks. You want to break town council history by, for the first time, having a multimillion-dollar contract that never goes to subcommittee? $15 million? We, we spent $15 million before without going to the subcommittee?
Just a second, Mr. Palowski.
I don't know. But, you know, we, we've got, you, you're the elected officials.
Motion for the extension.
My time is up.
We have a motion to extend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to extend. All those in favor? Mr. Palowski, you have another three minutes, if you wish them.
I'm going to say no.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Buxton.
I plan on using just the last two minutes I have. I feel this is just an extension of the ma, the agenda item. 6,300 households, 17,000 citizens roughly. What's our percentage of growth? If all of a sudden we have another 300 households over the course of five years, probably beat the gun. What happens? Does our contract now increase? Is there growth built within the contract? Let me get through this. Embedded improvement projects. If we improve our recycling, do we save money? If we reduce our trash, do we save money? Or is the contract a contract? Any benefit we have our residents put into the system, it doesn't matter. It's going to be paid anyway. We were informed at the curbside advisory, we'll have to look through the camera, the video. We were informed the totas were ours. Both, both totas. The finance fund. We have established the finance mechanism. What's the timeline on that? We have a study coming up. The study has to show us is the feasibility of the enterprise fund. So we're in a big rush to sign this contract. We don't want to delay this contract and we don't even have the finance mechanism ready. Please, I, if you're not going to delay it, I'm going right back to where I was. I used to be stuck in a 20-year contract. Every time I went to Casella, they said, "There's a contract, can't change nothing." Every time I went to the town, "There's a contract, can't change nothing." Once this is signed, five years, I'm going to hear, "There's a contract, can't change nothing."
Counselor Adams.
I'll be very short. The great thing is, we didn't vote tax increase where mandatory, everybody had to use this contract. The town council voted, along with the recommendation of the curbside committee for flat fee. As I explained to one individual yesterday, you have the right to go find another hauler if you're not enjoying this one that's coming up, regardless if it was Waste Management, Casella, Pratt, or whoever it may be. So you have those options. And I think it's time for us to go ahead and move on.
Counselor Rivas.
Is it possible to offer an amendment to sort of add maybe like a probationary period or a period of review to review the work, to review the services? Is that something we can do?
Mr. Manager.
If I may, you know, what they need to do, what Casella needs to do, what Waste Management would have needed to do if this was signed, is lock in these prices that they've quoted on this thing. So, you know, the answer is no. We, we can't just say, "Okay, we'll try it for a year and then call this whole thing off," other than for any conditions of nonperformance that exist in the contract. I mean, one of the big things with this is that, you know, we did want to get a five-year contract. We wanted to have it competitive. The Waste Management proposal was a 5% increase or the cost of living, CPI, whichever is higher. Casella agreed to go along with our 2% that we'd requested in the RFP, which I think is a big part of this contract. I mean, that is a good thing to have in this kind of inflation. They have agreed to increase this contract no more than 2% for the next five years. So again, I, I think that, to answer your question, Counselor, no. We can't just change and say, "We'll only try this for a year or two."
Counselor Montigny.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it's been an hour, and it's clear that it's really cut and dry. It's a good contract. You don't like Casella. Let's vote to move the question, a motion to move the question.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Montigny, a second by Counsel Ryan to move the question. There's no debate. All those in favor of moving the question? Opposed? Eight to one, eight yes, one nay. Mr. Marketti. Counsel Marketti, I'm sorry. Counsel Marketti against. The motion is, to move is passed. The question is now before us. Contingent upon the final review of town council to vote to accept the contract with Casella for curbside trash and recycling pickup and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
Some of.
It's been moved and seconded.
Roll call.
Roll call vote, wherever.
Counselor Marketti.
No.
Counselor Montigny.
Yes.
Counselor Rivas.
No.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
No.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Lozo.
Yes.
There are six yays, three nays. Motion passes. I call this meeting back to order at nine o'clock, right on the button. Item number 18, as we move along. Vote to approve entering into a 99-year lease agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Transportation for property ID number 34-179-1 in the assessor's parcel map and authorize the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved, second.
Motion by Counsel Lozo, second by Counsel Ryan. Any discussion? Counsel Steves.
This is just a quick observation for the, for the people who are watching. This, by the way, is specifically for the rail trail project because nobody on earth knows what property ID 34-blah-blah-blah-beans. So this is, this is our, this is leasing, making sure that we lease the, the rail trail so we can build it coming forward the next year. And just to clarify, it's not the entire parcel that the state actually owns. It's just the section that we're actually putting the trail on, maybe plus a foot or two on either side or something like that.
Very good. Very well. All those in favor?
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Too late.[1687.33]
Too late.
Too late.
Too late.
We voted.
We're good.
Why?
We're all done. Next.
Anyone opposed? You didn't call, you opposed. Okay, unanimous, all present.
I'd like to thank the council. I'd like to thank all the people who put this project together over the last sixteen years. And I'd like to say good night.
It's about time to get this one done.
Very good. Item number nineteen, vote to appropriate. Item number nineteen, vote to appropriate three hundred fifty thousand dollars from account Technical support capital budget to fund raw water quality improvement project.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counselor Ryan. Um, I believe Counsel Marquetti, this was yours?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Tom, uh, Counsel Chair, through you. Uh, this was voted unanimous at the DPW's subcommittee meeting. There was a question about the, uh, account number that this money was going into. It only says new account to be created. I think at the meeting, we did ask that they come to us, when they bring this up, that they give us an account number before voting to put it in. But I see that it hasn't been changed. So if we just could get an answer on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
No, I believe that they will assign the number.
They will assign the number after. Okay. The town manager says that the number will be assigned pending the, uh, the vote, the outcome of the vote on this, um, item.
So, do you think it's a good idea to vote to move money into an account that doesn't exist yet? I don't know. What's the proper procedure on that? I would think you'd want the account number first. That's just me, I guess.
That's not the way I look at it, but it's up to the council. I mean, you, I don't know if Steve is still here. I mean, he can explain the whole idea here.
I mean, the meeting was several weeks ago. It took him so long.
Good evening, everyone. Um, did anybody have any questions about the project or just the account?
Apparently the account. I think you're happy with the project.
I did check with the accountant today and reminded her this was brought up at subcommittee. She did provide an account number.
Ah, alright.
In anticipation of this being approved. So now you have to approve it, because I got you the account number. Would you like me to read out the account number? Do you want to have it after?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Uh, this, the account number will be moved to is four-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-three-zero-zero-zero-dash-six-four-four-eight-five.
Thank you. And it would be nice to hear about the project as well.
Sure.
Didn't mean to cut you out of that.
As most people are aware, in the summer times, certain summers, we have some seasonal color and some odor in the water that is unpleasing for the citizens. We've been working on finding a solution for this for several years now. And in this fiscal budget, we had planned on doing, designing for a major expansion to our treatment plant to add another process to try to treat this out of the water. This summer when I was, or actually, this fall when I was meeting with the process engineers from Time and Bond, who were the ones that did all of these studies with us, we talked about what that would really mean. It would mean about a three million dollar upgrade to our treatment plant, because that big of a change in footprint would require a code upgrade for the entire building. And then you also have the perpetual operations of the new chemical addition system we'd be putting in. So you're talking about costs on top of costs over time. And in my head, for a little while now, I had been thinking, what is the root of our problem? Is it poor treatment or is it something else? And at that meeting, the engineers brought up that same fact to me, is, have you looked at your reservoirs yet? Which has been a nagging thing in the back of my mind. These reservoirs are over a hundred years old, and when they were built, they were never properly excavated to raw earth. So there's a lot of organic still in the bottom, and there's a lot of iron and manganese that have built up over the last century. And, um, it, I mean, there's, I've got pictures of this reservoir, there's tree roots down there still. There's feet of muck around the gatehouse that wasn't excavated out the last time it was drained twenty years ago. So this money, I'm proposing, to be the seed money for a potential dredging project of Reservoir Three. We would have to find some other funding sources in the future, but I've got some ideas on that, but this would be the, the seed money for about a million to a million and a half dollar project to drain Reservoir Three and have a company come in and excavate it right to gravel or rock base, which would drastically improve our raw water quality, allowing the treatment plant to have less load on it. We wouldn't be trying to treat for that organic and that iron and manganese, it just wouldn't be there. So, we're trying to maybe improve our reservoir for the next hundred years, rather than adding more chemicals to the water over and over and over again.
That makes a lot of sense.
Counsel Steves?
I'm just curious, what would happen to all the stuff that you take out?
Um, we gotta go through DP on that. There's a chance that, substantial savings if we can keep it within our watershed. Because really, it's not anything hazardous. It's just organics and concentrated metals, natural metals. Uh, we're gonna ask DEP when we go through this if we can store it in our, we have something we call the gravel bank. It's an old gravel pit to the, um, north side of Reservoir Four, and we would probably go in there and store everything on site in there, let it dry out. And some of my friends that are in the industry tell me, when that sort of material does dry out, it makes some of the best soil for planting you've ever seen, so maybe we can use it downtown.
That's what those actually might be used for. Thanks.
Counsel Adams?
Name of the chair, make a motion to amend this, add that account number in there.
Second.
Yeah, it'll go from two, uh, two fund, and then obviously go four-two-zero-zero-zero-five-three-zero-zero? Six-four-four-two-five?
No, five-zero.
Yeah, you have two more zeros in there? Okay. So it'd be five-three-zero-zero-zero-six-four?
Four.
Four-eight-five.
Six-four-four-eight-five.
Very good. We have a motion and a second, a motion by Counselor Adams, a second by Counsel Lozlo to amend by adding that account number. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? The amendment passes unanimously. Okay, any further discussion on the, on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Thank you, Steve.
Next one.
You have another one? Oh, that's very. Um, item number twenty, vote to award the engineering design bid and DEP permitting of the polymer feed station to tie in bond for a fee of thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars to be paid from project account, water filter plant polymer station upgrade. Account number pending.
I got it.
Oh, can you just add a motion? Yeah, just add it.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Point of discussion?
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counselor Dow. Anyone wanting to discuss?
Would you have that number too?
I do have that, I do have that number.
Okay.
Um, that number for engineering is going to be account number four-one-zero-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-three-zero-zero-zero-six-four-five-three-six.
Six-four-five-three-six. Very good. Counselor Adams?
Yeah, motion amended. Uh, right, that, right after upgrade, adding four-one-zero-zero-zero-five-three-zero-zero-zero-six-four-five-three-six.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Adams, second by Counselor Ryan to amend by adding that account number. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Um, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one, Counsel Marquetti opposed. Motion passes. Item number twenty-one, vote to appropriate six hundred thousand dollars from free cash for the following. Other post-employment benefits, OPEB trust fund, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Town matching funds for DPW site cleanup, fifty thousand dollars. Treasure tax title taking expenses, one hundred thousand dollars. School maintenance truck with snowplow, one hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Dow, second by Counsel Lozlo. Counsel Steves?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we take them separately. Because there are certain things I have, I have no problem with and certain things I do, sir.
You wish to take each item separately?
Yes.
All four items separately?
Yes.
Four separate votes?
Yep.
We have a motion to take all four votes separately. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Ryan. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Uh, it looks like six to three, the motion passes. Very good. First vote, then the first motion, we vote to appropriate three hundred fifty thousand dollars for other post-employment benefits, the OPEB trust fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counsel Adams. Discussion. Counselor Steves?
This has always been one of my, my pain in the ass items. Pardon my French. Um, I can't stand OPEB. Um, it has nothing to do with, with supplying the retirees their benefits, because we pay that every year at the turn to the tune of millions of dollars. I, I personally think OPEB, as I've said this before, is basically a way the banksters get the public money, more of it in their hands, and we can't use it for things that we really need. So I'm not in favor of this.
Anyone else? Counsel Marquetti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, first of all, I don't recall any of these tonight ever coming before any subcommittee meeting.
They didn't.
So I really don't know why they would suddenly come right here. Uh, the school maintenance truck, I understand that we delayed that, but the other ones, I don't remember this coming up. Uh, second of all, I'm not quite understanding what Counsel Steves, because I can't really hear you that well, what do you mean by this funding? Why is, why is this funding not good for the retirees?
I have, I, I, it's not about the retirees. I have a problem with the fact that we fund, we fund retirement benefits to the tune of millions of dollars in the budget every year.
Yeah, they work for the towns.
Large sums of money. And I, and I have no problem with doing it. We do it every year, and I've never had a problem with that. I have a problem with taking this funds and putting it aside for the tune to, to three, to, for twenty years or so, where we need the funds to do a whole slew of major projects in our community today, that will be a benefit to the people twenty years from now as well, because they're an investment in our community, whereas this money just basically sits in a Wall Street account, Wall Street banksters' account for the, for millions of dollars for the next twenty years or so, and we can't have access to it. But we're still paying the benefits on an annual basis. To me, that seems like double dipping, and I've always had a problem with OPEB. I, I've, if you look back at the records, pretty much when we, when this comes up at this time of year, I vote it down most of the time, so.
So we're not required to pay into this? I thought we were.
We are.
The actuaries say that, the actuaries say that we should be doing it when we're already paying the bill to begin with.
Alright. Well, like I said, I don't remember these coming before any subcommittee.
They didn't.
Before appearing.
Yeah, if I may, I wasn't aware that these kind of transfers weren't before subcommittees. I mean, what I've tried to do is, you know, keep you up to date on what the budget is. As we talked about before, there wasn't a lot of background information here, I've done a lot of research and so forth. We have until June thirtieth to do whatever you'd like to do with what's in free cash. We can do nothing more, and you'll end up with two point three million dollars in free cash. Um, I noticed that you've had OPEB trust funds of three hundred fifty thousand each year. I assume the town was on a goal to try to work toward funding the obligation. Um, you know, Mr., Counsel Steves' concerns are shared by, I'm sure, many, but it doesn't change the general accounting, uh, board's change several years ago that indicated that a community has to start putting money aside for their future obligation. And the money that we have in there, I think we have, I forget exactly what we have, maybe two point nine million, whatever it happens to be, maybe more than that. It's only a fraction of what our ultimate goal, what our ultimate liability is. So, uh, my recommendation is to put the three fifty in the, uh, OPEB trust fund, as you have in the past. The downside is if you stop funding it completely, at some point, the rating agencies will look and say, "Well, wait a minute, we need to downgrade, uh, down, uh, downgrade their, uh, rating, bond rating."
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one, Counsel Steves opposed. Motion passes to fund OPEB, two to two hundred, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, vote to appropriate fifty thousand dollars for town matching funds for the DPW site cleanup.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counsel Lozlo. Um, any discussion? Counsel Steves?
Just a quick clarification. So where does thing, where do things stand as far as actually doing the work? Because we keep adding more and more engineering for that project, but as I, last I checked, we had, I don't know, well over a million bucks set aside to actually do the cleanup, and nothing has been done for a long time down there. Any ideas?
Well, uh, as far as having a million dollars set aside to do the cleanup, I'm really, I wasn't really actually aware of that. I, I have not seen where we have it. We have money, uh, set aside for the engineer who's overseeing this thing, a small amount of money. Um, this came up because we did get a grant of two hundred thousand dollars from the state to do a cleanup of some of the contaminated soil. And our obligation is to pay for some of the hauling, the cleaning up of the equipment and so forth, and the DPW director came to me and said he thought that he didn't have a final price yet, that the price ought to be in the order of, um, say fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, maybe ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And because this is an ongoing, you know, process where there are additional state grant funds available, I thought it'd be a good idea to put more money into this and set it aside for the matching funds we need for any grants that we happen to get. So it's a small amount. It's my understanding that the total cleanup cost on this is well over two and a half million dollars currently.
Oh, yeah, it's huge.
And I don't believe the town has set aside money for it, but I can certainly check.
Not that much, I don't think, yeah.
Well, I'm not even sure of the million, but I'll certainly look into it.
Counsel Lozlo?
Um, I'm gonna be voting in favor of this, and I also would just, uh, give a word to the wise. This was one of the biggest educations for the town of Southbridge by buying a building without an environmental letter. Taking the responsibility off the seller, putting it onto the town. We bought it for probably a million dollars, and that cash register hasn't stopped ringing since we bought it. And we're still not cleaned up. But, uh, moving forward, um, when you get an issue like this, you just don't forget the education. That's why on the rail trail, we're so cautious. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Marquetti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, with this one, last year, I believe this came to DPW's subcommittee, but I didn't see it this year, so I don't even have any paperwork on this one. So, not quite sure what's going on there. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
As I mentioned before, I wasn't aware that these, um, votes went to the subcommittee. In other words, what I've tried to do is review last year's, um, town council votes to see how you applied, um, the uses of free cash and transfers with the, uh, water and sewer reserve funds. I'll be coming back to you for your last meeting of the year to try to explain what we ought to do with that. If, if we need to get to a subcommittee before that, I'll have to look into that and see how we can work out the time to do that.
So you're just gonna cut a check to somebody, write a fifty thousand dollar check and hand it to somebody?
No, the town council can vote on this.
Right, okay.
Counsel Steves?
I'm just to follow up a little bit. Um, so just to clarify, so what exactly, you say that this, this project is two hundred thousand bucks, plus or minus, um, in the grant. So what exactly are they going to do for that two hundred thousand bucks, if they're just doing some cleanup work? Because the, the project up there, as you pointed out, is vastly larger than that.
Well, they're gonna take a certain quantity of contaminated soil, take it, treat it properly, whatever they have to do to treat it, and that will reduce, you know, the remaining level of contaminants on the site to a different level. And you've got a lot more work to do with that. From what I understand, and I haven't really had an opportunity to spend a lot of time on this, but I have, I've tried to talk to the engineer a few times, and I've certainly spoken with the DPW director about this. But basically, there is a, a state, you know, program to try to support this. They understand what Southbridge is facing based on the extreme contamination that we do have there, and they are trying to earmark a fair amount of this grant money for us. In return for that, we'll have to have money available to pay our share.
No, I, I understand that, and I, and I'm glad that we are going after these grants. They're just, I would like to see that got done a long time ago, but, okay.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Chair, through you. Mr. Manager, that grant every year, it's, uh, allowed to the town of Southbridge have it?
Well, no, they are competitive, and I believe they, they, they review all the applications they get, but they have indicated a priority to.
But we comply for it every year.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And save money.
And the idea will, this will go through, I think, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. That grant program, I understand, will be in place, and we will be applying, and they understand the need that we have for it.
Thank you.
Oh, good to know. That's good to know.
Anyone else? Very good. We have a motion to appropriate fifty thousand dollars to the town matching funds for DPW site cleanup. All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one, Counsel Marquetti opposed. Motion passes. Vote to appropriate one hundred thousand dollars from free cash for the treasure tax title taking expenses.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counsel Steves?
Counsel Dow.
I'm sorry, Counsel Dow.
That's all right.
Vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash for the treasurer tax title taking expenses.
Some moved.
Second. Motion by Council Ryan, second by Council Steve's.
Council Dow.
I'm sorry, Council Dow.
That's all right. Thank you.
It's catchy. Council Steve's.
My concern about this one is, we just got that email that you just sent around today from our attorneys saying that the Supreme Court said that we basically have had to completely revamp how we do tax title takings because it's unconstitutional. How does that affect this?
Well, I guess we'll, you know, find out as that law is applied to Massachusetts. The reason for this is that Southbridge hasn't had any tax title taking in several years. You've had turnover in the treasurer's office. You have 47 properties that are listed right now that are being worked on. And if we want to do any tax title work, whether we are able to achieve the full equity value out of them as we currently do in Massachusetts, or down the road, they changed the law, and we can't do that, we'll get less money back. But I guess the point is here that we need to get the tax title program going. This was the figure that our tax title attorney recommended to get this thing, this program moving. So I would recommend that we do deal with these tax title foreclosure expenses and appropriate that money.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one, Council Mark Hedy opposed. Vote to appropriate $100,000 from free cash for the school maintenance truck with snowplow.
Some moved.
Second. Motion by Council Lazo, second by Council Dow. Discussion. Council Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I will be voting no on this item tonight. When I wanted this to get reviewed, I wanted, we had a standardization form for all capital items to be approved. It was not done on that. We got a couple of emails, and of the photos we got, they do not show the level of wear and tear that was described at the Subcommittee. It was described as it having holes in it. The condition of the truck, I've seen trucks in our town go through a lot more wear and tear before being sent down to pasture. I think that this truck's got a couple more years in it before we send it out to pasture, so I will be opposing this expenditure tonight. I think we have better uses for our money. Thank you.
Council Lazo.
I respect the previous speaker, but this is the business I'm in. I didn't have any information at the meeting, so, and usually Council Mark Hedy is, he was the one that was very adamant, I think, a year ago when he got on council, that before we replaced a vehicle was to see the rot and the despair of a vehicle. And in these pictures here, you can tell somebody keeps doing a Band-Aid job and patching the holes. This one picture, the hole is a foot square, but someone patches it and keeps it together with bubble gum and Band-Aids. Another one here, hole right through the side of the toolbox. Then when you see the frame of the toolbox rotting off right through the bottom, and then there's a hole through the side door, I give you credit for putting the Band-Aids on it, making it last, but these pictures here tell me it's time to go. I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Council Mark Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. When I was at the Capitol Planning Committee, the school board, Dr. Valar came to the committee, and this was on the agenda. But the only thing that we had gotten at the time was this one piece of paper identifying that the service body is rotted, unable to store tools, service compartment. And I couldn't recall seeing any photos on it, but when I reviewed the tape of the meeting, Dr. Valar did pass around photos. It's not something, I just didn't recall seeing them, but he did pass around these photos, so I apologize for not remembering that, really. The question, though, that we had at the last council meeting when we postponed this was that not the need for the truck, but the cost of the truck. That was what the question was. Is it $100,000 for a truck? I see in tonight's packet, he had three different quotes for a truck. I don't see what's wrong with taking a low number, $74,000 for a truck. I thought at the time $100,000 was a little high, but in the, you know, in order to compromise and get it to the council, the committee voted on it, and I agreed, I accepted that. But going forward, I think that if you can save some money on a truck, and they don't need something like this, that's $100,000, as Council Lazo pointed out at the last meeting, our cruisers are only, two cruisers are only $150,000, but we're buying a plow truck for $100,000. So that was, that was really the only issue at the time. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Council Lazo.
I agree, and you hit it right on the head, there are multiple prices. The thing is, what he bought, I didn't have the information that I have here tonight. When you fully equipped the maintenance truck with the toolbox that it has and the components that go with it and in it, that's why it rose to $90,000. And with, in talking to the maintenance director and knowing how we deal with ambulances and when we go off the list, he plugged in $100,000, but he doesn't think he's going to use it, but just in case he runs into a snag that he goes higher than 90, he doesn't want to come all the way back and do the process again, which I get. So to me, I think we might get it under $100,000. But the truck that he's ordering is well worth it now that I know the components of what we're going to be buying.
Council Dow.
Thank you, Chair through you. I want to thank the school department for repairing that truck temporarily because legally it's not safe for the employee to drive the way it was patched. And I know what I'm talking about. I have a repair shop, so they was giving us favored delay to order a new truck, and I think it's time for it because you don't want nobody to pass out on that truck, especially if it's rotten. Safety-wise, I think they deserve a new truck. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Shortly after our meeting, I got a response from Mark, and I appreciate that. That was really, really quick, and I appreciate you watching our town council meeting all the way through, so, that late at night. But I will, lessons learned from the Capitol Committee. They need to do a better job with the things that the town council has requested in the past. And take a look at these trucks. I agree with Council Ryan, there are certain forms that we've mandated three, four years ago that everybody has to fill out when it comes to those capital items. And so there wasn't something, you know, that would happen a couple weeks ago to them or to anybody else within the community. So I think that lessons learned on our part and the Capitol Committee's part for next year, if it is stood back up. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to two. Councils Mark Hedy and Ryan opposed. Item number 22, vote to approve a library transfer request for $68 from account number 001-610-573000 due and subscriptions to account number 001-610-571000 mileage to cover a training opportunity with an in-person component.
Some moved.
Second. Motion by Council Lazo, second by Council Steve's. Council Montigny.
This was recommended favorably at Subcommittee.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item 23, vote to approve a community center transfer request for $37 from account number 001-549-543000 MNI Building to account number 001-549-523000 water and sewer to cover a water sewer bill.
Some moved.
Second. Motion by Council Ryan, second by Council Steve's. Council Montigny.
Thank you. This was recommended favorably at Subcommittee.
Discussion. Council Lazo.
I'm in favor of the transfer, but this is one of the examples that in the next, after reorganization in the future, maybe next couple of months, we might look at a policy where we don't have to transfer $37. Maybe we could put a nice little mild ceiling on it so the town manager can take care of it. But I think we need to work on it, understand it, so we'll do it in the future. Thank you.
Council Adams.
Not to go way off this line item, but this item, like I said at that meeting, that was a waste of time bringing a department head in from their family for $37, $68, even $100. It's a waste, in my personal opinion, and I'm glad to see people are willing to take a look at a change. So you'll have it, I believe it's going to be by the first meeting in July after the reorganization transfer policy request. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 24, vote to approve a proposed senior exercise program to take place three times per week at the Casablanca Senior Center to be paid from the state formula grant and authorize the town manager to sign related documentation.
Some moved.
Second. Motion by Council Ryan, second by Council Dow. Council Montigny.
Thank you. This was also recommended favorably at Subcommittee.
Discussion. Council Rivas.
So I actually came in after this discussion was already done, but I had sent an email. I have a question and possibly an amendment. I'd like to know what days of the week the program is going to be implemented, if, through the chair to the town manager.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Please come to the microphone.
That's Monday, Wednesday, Friday. I think it's pretty much just renewing an existing contract.
So I guess this has been something that I've addressed previously with, through the town manager. It is one program, as our director of that program has stated to me several times, but there are different people that attend different days and different groups of our community. And in order for this program to be equitable access for everyone that attends Monday through Friday, the programs and the exercises should be offered at least four times a week. Because when they're offered Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, you have a whole segment of our community that doesn't have the direct access. It is inequitable. It creates an inequitable situation. If it is one program, then it should be offered at least four times a week. You know, if it was the other way around, and it was being offered on Tuesday and Thursday, I would have the same problem. It is not equitable. It is not equitable access to everyone that attends the program on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So I think that this should be amended in some way so that it can be offered at least four times a week.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm going by my memory of this item coming up in the past, because it has come up in the past. This is grant-funded to begin with. I believe that the instructor would have to be involved in making that kind of a decision. I don't think it's something that the council can unilaterally ask of. So I understand what your concerns are. I don't disagree with them. However, I don't know exactly where we're able to go in terms of changing the particulars of the grant at this point, nor making requests of the program director, either Pat Haddock or of the person offering the program, Ms. Reynolds.
Thank you. I think at this time I will not vote in favor of this until we, until I see something that creates the right access for all of our seniors in our town. I think that they deserve that.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, I have a question. Ask me. Council Rivas did bring this to my attention a few weeks ago, and I haven't really had a chance to look into it deeply, but I do have a question that might help me understand this. So in other words, we're talking about the senior center. Isn't the senior center open five days a week, or is it?
Yes.
Okay. So in other words, is there anything that prevents anyone that wants to go on a Tuesday or a Thursday from showing up on a Monday, Wednesday, or a Friday if they want to take the program?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
But, the program offered in Spanish is only two days a week. And so if you have limited English ability, most likely you are not going to feel comfortable attending Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and that is the only time that these exercise programs are offered. And more often than not, it is only at my request that information about these programs is translated into Spanish. It is not equitable. Yes, people can attend Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, but when the transportation is provided on Tuesdays and Thursdays for those people that have limited English ability and the translation is only offered on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I would argue that it is not equitable access to only offer the exercise programs on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Thank you. That clarifies that.
Thank you.
Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, to town manager or even Mike, I know Pat's going to be leaving here very soon. We have one more meeting on the 26th. I wouldn't have a problem postponing this to the 26th and see if we can work something else out.
Council Dow.
Thank you, Chair through you. Why we have to postpone it? We can prove it and update it later, so we can always look through what date you'd like to add it, and we can always add those dates if we can, but then postpone it and lose it. Sometime, you know, postpone, postpone. I mean, approve it now, and we look through it, and we can add it different days. Why not?
Okay, Council Adams, then Council Steve's, then Council Lazo. Okay, Council Steve's, then Council Lazo.
I just wanted to point out that, if I recall correctly from previous years, this is actually, it's a standing contract. So if we want to do, if we want to change it, I don't have a problem with that personally. But I think we would have to sit down, as somebody mentioned earlier, and negotiate it with the person who's providing it so that they can, they can change what their services are. I mean, they may very well be providing the same service in some other location on the Tuesdays and Thursdays, so that may be an issue. We don't know.
Council Lazo.
My question would be, do we poll our people? Do we ask? Do we just tell them that there's a program on three days a week, or do we say, we set it up more fitting to our people?
At the risk of just sounding like I'm passing the buck, it's not a program I run, but I can say on my own behalf, it's not always easy to, you know, fit everyone's needs. You can try to do your best, but sometimes you just can't line up the stars. I'm just, so. It can be difficult. I think Pat would be willing to entertain it, but I can't speak on her behalf on that. I know the days of the week that it's run, and I'm almost certain it's just a renewal of an existing contract, so.
Thank you.
Haven't heard from Council Mark Hedy yet. Council Mark Hedy, then Council Rivas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman through you. I was wondering if there would be a way that we could, you know, switch it back and forth, one week, Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the next week, Tuesday, Thursday. That way, I don't think it would cost any more money, so, just a thought.
Council Rivas.
I think if it was, if we are able to negotiate that with the, with the exercise program and the participants from both, you know, both sets of dates are okay with that, that makes sense. But just, just to respond to Mike, I think that all of our residents deserve our most, you know, our best efforts to try to meet the needs of all of our seniors. The Latino seniors have worked hard in this community, and they also deserve to have access, again, equitable access. And if we can renegotiate the contract, if we can't, if this particular provider can't, there are lots of different providers that can facilitate and provide exercise programs on the days that we need. We don't have to use just one person unless that's what the grant requires. I haven't read the grant completely, but there are lots of providers that we can try to get to meet our needs of our citizens. And so I would be, I think I would be amenable to postponing until we can renegotiate or at least explore the possibility of adding those other days.
Second.
Council Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not going to not vote for this grant because it's much needed in the community for our seniors regardless. I would like to go back and have a conversation with the individual that's running this program to see if there is a possibility of change in the date, working with them, and just give a little bit more time to have that conversation. I will vote yes on the 26th for this, just because I don't want to lose this, but I just wanted to see what their take is on the whole process. And take a look at this. This thing goes all the way till 2032, by the way.
That's, that's, that's not the same thing, I don't think.
Oh, is that?
That's, that's the grant, or that's the grant.
That's not the contract with the person.
Yeah, we read this contract like every year.
I was confused by that as well. I thought, wow, this is a 30-year exercise program?
It's a lot of exercise.
Good for them. Ten years.
All right, Council Lazo, then Council Dow.
I'm not going to postpone it, but I would hope that our people would adjust, like any program in town, whether it be kids, adults. You know, I was in a youth program for years, 17 years, and we constantly did it, but we constantly adjusted on the fly. We, first of all, we need a new director, from what I understand, and the new person coming in, I would like, I mean, even in recreation, I mean, some of the programming, you have programs, and then you get into the program, and all of a sudden, adjust it where it fits, Southbridge, where it fits our citizens. So I'd like to move forward on it as far as the grant part and move forward. It says three times a week. If we adjust where that happens, I think our elder services person can handle that. I mean, I don't want to start getting into running someone's program. I mean, I don't want to start getting into running someone's program. I would rather vote to put the program in and hope that our program can be adjusted to our citizens. Thank you.
Counsel Rivers.
I just have one final question.
I'm sorry.
Are we, through the, through the chair to the Town Manager, are we able to accept the grant funding on the contingency that we find a program that meets the needs of our community? Are we able to do that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, I'm not that familiar with this grant. I can look into it, but I really have not looked into this one.
Counsel Adow.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. When the original contract expires, it's how, how long we have to renew that contract? Is that new contract?
I honestly don't know. This is the first I've seen of this. I'll chalk this hat. I won't.
So technically, we can approve the grant, I think, and then we can discuss the days with the person who run the program.
I wish I had learned from you. I'm sorry, though.
Why don't we just postpone? I think there's a motion on the floor.
How long, how long we have for the grant to lose if we vote or postpone the grant? Do we have time, or we lose it?
Again, you asking me? I have no idea.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Lozlo.
I'm gonna vote for it. It says three times a week, adjust it. And if there's only three times a week, that's all that can be afforded out of it, that's all there is. That's really, I mean, I don't know how you're gonna start customizing every single program that we have. And I think it should be handled at the ground level, not at the council level. We fund it, we vote it, and then after, our expert should handle it. It says three times a week. Maybe we might have to revisit which days to make it more convenient to our public. Thank you.
Counsel Rivers.
Again, these are, I've heard from our residents who attend this program, and this is something that they are very upset about. And it is our responsibility to advocate for our, all of our residents. And I, I just think that it doesn't hurt to postpone this to our next meeting so that our Town Manager can find the information, talk to Pat, and get us an answer as to whether we can vote for the grant and separate it from the actual program. I don't think that hurts.
Have you made an official motion?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have an official motion and a second. An official motion by Counsel Rivers, a second by Counsel Ryan to postpone to the 26th. Correct?
Yes.
Very good. Counsel Adow.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. My concern is, we don't know the time if we're gonna lose that grant, and then we can't have nothing anymore.
We'll get somebody else.
I mean, we don't have no answer. I think we should accept the grant and then negotiate the time, what day we can, if we can change the time and the date with our citizen to be able to attend that program.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Counsel Steves.
If I understand this correctly, what the problem is, is the way this is phrased, because we are not, we're not voting on approving the, accepting the Council on Aging Grant. We get that every year. It's basically automatic. This is specifically funding the program through grant money, which is simply subject to the contract that we're debating whether or not we want to have dates and times and that kind of stuff on it. The grant is not going anywhere. I think we approved, I think we approved the Council on Aging Grant like a month ago, if I'm not mistaken.
We didn't.
So this is, this is not part of the grant. It's being funded by the grant, but we're not losing the grant by delay.
Counsel Adams.
Again, contract takes us to 2032 with this grant, correct? It's the, what they're trying to get is that this individual to come in three days a week to do that, the program itself. So it's there. The grant's there. And, you know, we're just agreeing that Ms. Reynolds would, would come in three days a week. It's contract with her.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Very well. All those in favor postponing to June 26th? One, two, three, four, five, six. Those against postponing? Three. Six affirmative, three negative. The motion is postponed to June 26th.
I'm sorry, who was, who voted negative?
The three against were Counsel Muntigney, Counsel Lozlo, and Counsel Adow. Item number 25. Vote to ratify the service contract with Solitude Lake Management for the remainder of fiscal year '23 and authorize the Town Manager to sign related documentation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counsel Ryan, Counsel Muntigney.
Thank you very much. This and the next one for FY '24 were both favorably recommended.
Any further discussion?
I do.
Counsel Marketti.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. There was some discussion about why we are continuing to treat the rez. Nobody uses it anymore. They used to be swimming there, geez, maybe 50 years ago, but I don't think there's anything going on there at this time. And we thought maybe, we suggested that maybe we could use the money somewhere else, like at Henry Street Field. There's been a lot of people complaining about ticks and mosquitoes down there, and maybe Carpenter's Pond. I don't know, but I just know that the rez does not get used anymore, so we were questioning why we continue to spend money on it, treating it with herbicides and mosquito control, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. So I reached out to Solitude after looking back in the accounting software and realizing that it was just kind of odd payment amounts and asking them exactly what services are they doing. They responded with some spotty years because of COVID, but did mention that the contract was a little bit dated in their sense, so they would be upping it. This is why it's been proposed. They cut us a deal for this year, but to Counselor Marketti's point, I have reached out to the conservation agent, who I originally thought might have had some, some want to keep the rez serviced. They said that they had no need for it. The water management company, which the subcommittee asked if they could treat it, they don't do that service. They don't use it as a reservoir. And Eric, our conservation agent, mentioned that the fire department was the original ask. They were the ones that actually requested to have the services taken care of. I'm assuming because the close relationship the rec department had with the fire department when the rez was in full swing. I would like to see a continued use, but I will say at this moment, there isn't quite a department that is really asking for it to be serviced.
Any further discussion?
So therefore, are we going to not continue to service this rez, or?
In my own personal opinion, I think it would be a place that we could use full year round. I'm not, I cannot guarantee winter because the seasons just haven't been calling for it. I'd like to see it get done. I know it would be a difficult feat. That's up to you and the priorities. I would probably rather see it get serviced with just over two grand for the next fiscal year compared to most of the things that you guys were discussing tonight. It's a drop in the hat. But if that's not a priority for the town anymore, I suppose I understand.
Counsel Muntigney.
Thank you. I seem to, we're talking about the rez on High Street, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I seem to recall that the Friends of the Rez reached out and had a big meeting, I think, with you and the Town Manager and DPW Director and the Building Inspector, and there might have even been the Health Inspector. I don't know, I just feel like people were really looking forward to some cold weather so we could use it for ice skating. And then now, they were talking about doing other different things, movie nights, or fishing tournaments, or all these different things. So I just, I disagree that there's no interest, but I agree with your sentiment that we should continue to do it, that it would be best. I don't think now is the time to just kill the rez all of a sudden, especially when we're trying to rise onto this economic boom that we're about to experience and we are experiencing. Thanks.
Counsel Steves.
Yeah, I'm curious. I know, I remember you talking about wanting to keep things going up there with the rez or create something. Do you have any ideas of realistically a timeframe and a plan for bringing that facility back into some general use? Because I can understand it treating it if we're going to use it, but if we're not going to use it, maybe we can tie in future treatment to having an actual plan to use the facility. Because if we're not using it, what's the point?
Thank you. I think it would probably take quite, like, quite a lot of effort. I think that's really just on, the timeframe can really depend on how much effort we give. The concrete steps going down are a little bit cracked, or concrete surfaces that kind of level it down. The steps are essentially wood. Those were repaired by DPW within a day, and the building inspector said that there is some loss in the building, but hacking off essentially what was an addition and closing that up and shoring it off would make the building sound. So it, it would take some work, but I don't think nearly as much as anyone really imagines. I don't think it really would be too, too difficult.
Is that gonna be included as part of the open space rec plan that I think we approved through, I don't know, a month or so ago? As far as the next CDBG funding round?
I would have to look, but I wouldn't be surprised.
It should be. So we can look at it.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Vote is seven to two with Counselors Marketti and Steves opposed. Item number 26. Vote to ratify service contract with Solitude Lake Management for fiscal year '24 and authorize the Town Manager to sign related documentation.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counsel Adow. Discussion. Counsel Muntigney.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that if you don't treat this, it's mainly for like weed control, and if you don't treat it, the fish are gonna die and the whole neighborhood would stink. So even if you don't use it, you got to do it. Unless you want a stinky High Street.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Seven to two. Motion passes. Counsel Steves and Marketti against. Item number 27. Vote to approve a cable department transfer request for $5,880 from account number 001159-558000 miscellaneous materials to account number 001159-576100. Other legal to cover law services.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counsel Adow. This was Gen Gov, I believe. Counsel Steves.
We did recommend it unanimously.
Very good discussion. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Are we going to see the cable contract at some point?
Yes. Through you, yes.
And when would that be?
Hopefully very soon.
All right.
We have the contract negotiated. The cable committee reviewed it and came up with several questions about paragraphs that were changed from the last contract 10 years ago. And the attorney replied to those, and he has two outstanding questions that he wants to address with charter, and then we'll have it to you. In fact, tomorrow, Wednesday, I'll send you the contract as it stands now.
And are we going to have our three channels as we used to have?
I believe so. I don't think there's any change in that, but don't quote me on that. We will get you the information.
Because, I mean, we've been missing one channel for a couple of years now.
I'm not sure about that. I'll check.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 28. Vote to approve a human resources transfer request for $9,600 from account number 001132-578100 Town Council Reserve to account number 001152-534600 Recruitment to cover recruitment expenses included pre-employment physicals and job ads.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Ryan, second by Counsel Steves. Counsel Steves.
We recommended this unanimously. We discussed it at some length because part of it is that this is, this is, these, whole cost of doing recruitment has gone up quite a bit because we've had a lot of new people in fire and police departments, and they, they go a lot, they require much more detailed pre-employment screenings and physicals and those kinds of stuff than the, than the office people do. So that's a big part of it. We've also had a lot of changeover just in-town employees in general, so that's where this is mostly coming from.
Any further discussion? Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I did ask a few questions about this at the subcommittee, exactly what recruitment was being done. There was one dated in January, date of the, the, the cost, the service month was December, but there was no description. I asked about several of them that were no description. There was one that was one firefighter, I guess, three standard, I guess FF stands for firefighter, two DOT, sex regular, and then there was a buffer for costs beyond estimate. So I did ask a few questions. There was no one there to answer the question. The DPW Director, Deputy Director, to be determined that they're estimating $300. And there was, so there were several questions about this. I see Adriana's here, I guess, to answer my questions. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the first line item that you see, Counsel Marketti, is for charges already incurred through comper care. So those are pre-employment physical costs for numerous different positions. So fire, police, town hall, DPW. So it's, it's just not one department, it's everyone. The same, the second line item is the same thing for the next month. So the first three lines are charges that we've already incurred. And then the last three lines are charges that we know we're gonna, we're projecting that we're gonna get before the end of the year, based on the open positions that we have.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? And one absent. So the vote is seven, one, one. Counsel Adow against. Counsel Ryan's excused temporarily. Motion passes. Item number 29. Vote to approve the inspections department request to pursue the recycling evidence program, RDP, grant for fiscal year '24, and to designate the Town Manager signatory of the IDP grant agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counsel Adow. Counsel Lozlo.
Through the chair. The, it was unanimous at subcommittee for approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Eight, zero, one. Motion passes. Item number 30. Vote to waive all permitting and inspection fees for the Town Animal Shelter project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counsel Ryan. Chief, are you addressing this?
Good evening, and just through you, Mr. Chair. This is just a permitting for the construction of the kennel, is my understanding.
Right, permits and inspections.
Permits and inspection.
For the kennel.
Yeah.
Counsel Steves.
Honestly, I personally think we should maybe create a permanent policy where a town project shouldn't be paying fee for these fees anyway because they're town projects. Seriously, this is ridiculous.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea. Counsel Adow, then Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. Chief, if we approve that tonight, are you sure you're gonna build that kind of fire?
It's been about 15 years, and I've been the chief for seven, so.
Can we have a date? I wanna see it.
Yeah, well, me too. I don't want, I'm afraid to give one. We, through you, Mr. Chair, it's going out to bid, and we'll have a much better idea once we get bids back from construction companies that give us a timeline. So you should have a bid or a date soon. I just don't want to give you one tonight.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel Adow asked my question.
Very good. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item 31. Vote to approve a police department transfer request for $12,400 from account number 001210-511000 salary and wages to account number 001210-515000 Holiday to cover the additional costs for holiday coverage for the remainder of the fiscal year.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Lozlo, second by Counsel Adow. Counsel Lozlo.
The subcommittee voted unanimously to approve.
Any discussion? Counsel Marketti. Councilor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I understand sometimes there are things that come up. You have no choice. You have to transfer some funds over to cover some of these items. Some of them, though, I'm looking at, I'm not quite sure that they need to be funded this fiscal year. I think they could be put off till next fiscal year. We're never going to get control of our budget if we're going to keep transferring at the end of the year. So like I said, I don't have a problem with some of them. I think, okay, I understand completely. You have some electrical bills or something like that. You have some holiday coverage. Some of them, I think we could probably hold off on for now. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilor Dow.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chair. Through you. Chief, I want to thank you for all this months. You were very busy, the department, all these accidents and incidents. The police department, fire department did a great job and thanks for the man that covered all these incidents. Thank you. Thank you.
Council Steve's.
I'm just curious. Since we obviously know, we have a pretty good idea of going for it every year, we know which days are going to be the legal holidays. How is it that we always end up having transfers for holiday pay at the end of the year? We know which days they are.
Through you, Mr. Chair, no, not necessarily. Staffing fluctuates. If I have 35 full-time people and nine dispatches that we have to pay holidays for, that's what we budget for. If I have 39 working, if we ever get back to full staff, if we ever end up at 40, it fluctuates every single month to month with the turnover. So if during the budget season, I'm told, it's either one way or the other with transfers and, you know, I can, well, keep my opinions to myself on that for now. But the, we're the only community that does it. You give me a budget, you tell me zero budget every year. So I come in zero budget. This budget season with the change in the structure of the council, I'm going to come in and tell you what we really need and I'm going to be told, no, zero budget, and then I'm going to be back here again next year. Since I've been the chief, I have to come in and do this because it's zero-based budget. And I get it. I understand it. I was born here, I was raised here, I know the financial structure and limitations, but I can't, you give me a budget number to work with, I stay within that budget and I have to transfer money at the end to cover costs so I don't have to come in for overages. But it's that budget. It's my operational budget. Money can be moved from account to account. I don't, the transfer thing is, and again, every year I stand up here and say the same thing. So I'll come back in January or February, whenever we do the budget, new council, permanent town manager, I'm going to say, police department budget's 35% more than it was last year. Everybody's going to say, you can't do it, it has to be zero. I'll say, okay, we'll do zero, as long as I can do transfers in June, and then I'll be here next year. And I know you have to take a year off, so you can watch, because I'll be here next year. Same time, probably same, around the same date, doing transfers again from one budget to another. Because I can't predict holiday coverage. Some New Years are more busy than others. Sometimes we have major crimes on Christmas Eve, believe it or not. I have to pay these people holiday coverage and it just fluctuates. It's too difficult to predict. But I will predict it. I'll try to forecast it and it's going to be a very high number. Or not, you know, a substantial increase. I'd rather do transfers. It's just easier to keep it all within that operating budget. But if you want a true budget within, as close as I can get it, I will give you one and we can debate it then.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, just to expand on that a little bit. I mean, Southbridge isn't the only town that has to go through that. As a matter of fact, the Municipal Modernization Act several years ago made it easier for departments to transfer money between accounts for that very purpose. So people wouldn't have to go back to, in the case of a town meeting, a town meeting for a vote, or in the case of here, to the town council. So I understand what the chief is saying and it is not unique to Southbridge. But actually coming here for this transfer is a little bit unique.
Yeah. All right.
It's very unique.
Yeah.
Council Lozlo.
Chief, one of the things you brought up when they said, can you predict the holidays? We said the same thing at subcommittee. Well, we're going to have a Christmas, we're going to have an Easter, whatever. Thanksgiving sometimes away, sometimes home. But the thing is, depending on who signs up for the overtime, if it's a high-ranking sergeant with a bigger pay, if it's an officer out of pay scale, you're going to throw, you're going to throw it off because there's no bottom-line salary. You can guess it and it's like Neil and Jolla want to trade. So I understand some of the budgetary things that you have to do with transferring and then there are other ones I don't understand, but we'll work on. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Number 32, vote to approve a police department transfer request for $800 from account number 001210-511000 salary and wages to account number 001210-527100 gear and uniforms to cover the costs associated with purchasing the required equipment for candidates who are currently attending the police academy.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Council Lozlo, second by Councilor Ryan. Council Lozlo.
The subcommittee voted unanimously for this transfer.
Discussion.
Yeah.
Councilor Adams.
Again, another waste of time for a transfer up here. Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 33, vote to approve a police department transfer request for $6,000 from account number 001210-511000 salary and wages to account number 001210-548000 motor vehicle parts and accessories to purchase an adequate supply of police-issue tires so our vehicle fleet continues to have available pursuit-rated tires.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Council Lozlo, second by Councilor Ryan. Council Lozlo.
The subcommittee voted unanimously for approval.
Discussion. Counselor, I'm sorry, chief.
No, no. If I could, through you, Mr. Chair, this one, Council Lozlo and I, who's the chairman of PPP, we had a lengthy discussion and I agree with some of the points that were brought up and we'll do a little bit better job next year coming into, during budget season and trying to budget adequately for tires. So this is one that I understand that I can try to forecast a little bit better next year. The tires.
Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one, Council Marquetti against. Motion passes. Item number 34, vote to approve a police department transfer request for $7,600 from account number 001210-511000 salary and wages to account number 001210-53000 specialized services to cover the costs associated with the upgrade to computer software and our communication system.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Council Lozlo, second by Councilor Ryan. Council Lozlo.
The vote at subcommittee was unanimous for approval.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Nine, zero. Unanimous of all present. Item number 35, vote to approve a police department transfer request for $3,000 from account number 001210-511000 salary and wages to account number 001210-546000 buildings and grounds to cover the costs associated with the purchasing of a storage trailer.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Council Lozlo, second by Councilor Ryan. Council Lozlo.
Through the chair, the subcommittee voted unanimously for approval.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one, Council Marquetti opposed. Motion passes. Item number 36, vote to approve a police department transfer request for $12,000 from account number 001210-511000 salary and wages to account number 001210-550300 safety patrol supplies to cover the costs associated with the purchase of five public safety-rated portable radios.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Council Lozlo, second by Councilor Ryan. Council Lozlo.
Subcommittee, through the chair, the subcommittee voted unanimously for approval.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one. Motion passes. Council Marquetti against. Item number 37, vote to approve a police department transfer request for $5,400 from account number 001210-511000 salary and wages to account number 001210-558200 prisoner maintenance to cover the costs associated with the purchase of an audio microphone system for the cell block.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Council Lozlo, second by Councilor Dow. Council Lozlo.
Through the chair, the subcommittee voted unanimously for approval.
Chief, I believe this has got to do with your certification process.
Through you, Mr. Chair, correct. Through the process of accreditation, there are certain standards we have to meet as a police department. This is one of them. We have to communicate back and forth with anybody that's a prisoner with us or in our cell block. This will get that done.
Very good. Council Steve's.
I think that's a great idea. I'm just questioning is why isn't this being treated as capital? Is there a certain deadline that this has to be done by?
Through you, Mr. Chair, it wasn't brought up as a capital item. It's $5,400. I believe it's $10,000, isn't it, for capital? But second, I just learned about this probably two, three weeks ago through the accreditation process that we needed this. So I couldn't come before, or I would have if I needed to, for a capital expense, but I didn't know it at the time when we were going, speaking of, or talking.
Are they requiring like a certain deadline for you to put it in or something like that?
If we want, through you, Mr. Chair, if we want to become accredited, this has to be done. There isn't a deadline, but I'd like to be marching in that direction within a year or so. So.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one. Motion passes. Council Marquetti against. Item number 38, vote to accept the donation of $10,000 from the Fraternal Order of Eagles to purchase new automated external defibrillators.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Council Lozlo, second by Councilor Ryan. Council Lozlo.
Through the chair, the vote was unanimous to accept the donation.
Any discussion? Chief.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say that the Eagles Club, they're great neighbors and great partners in the community and they've been speaking with us on a monthly basis about finally getting this done. And we did. So this is going to replace some of the AEDs we have and put them in our fleet. So they're on the street every day working for the citizens in our community and thank you to the Eagles.
They do a great job for us.
They do.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Eagles. Have a good night. Item number 39, vote to approve a fire department transfer request for $10,410 from fund number 0842, account number 842960-596300 capital stabilization fund to account number 400220-583000-64633 new ambulance and related equipment to cover the surcharge of $10,313 for an increase in the chassis and component prices relevant to the purchase of a new ambulance and to cover a difference of $97.80 from the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Counselor Dow, second by Counselor Ryan. Council Lozlo.
Through the chair, it was voted unanimously by the subcommittee for approval.
Discussion. Counselor Steve's.
Just wanted to point out that this has, requires two-thirds of the majority to pass.
It does.
Council Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was discussed at PPP. The question that some of us had was, if they can increase the cost of the ambulance, just because they want to increase the cost, that's the way I'm reading it, it was just an overcharge. I know that the fire chief said that, well, there was nothing in there that said they could and there was nothing in there that said they couldn't. But that doesn't make much sense to me if it says they can't or if it says that they, it doesn't say that they can do it, well, then they can't do it. So the other issue that I had with it is that, you know, if they're going to charge us, an overage charge here or a surcharge, then, you know, why couldn't we charge them? And they were supposed to deliver this in 210 days. It's now 334 days. So I'm not quite sure why it is that they can charge us, but we can't do anything about their delay in delivering the ambulance. I know the question was asked, well, what would happen if we didn't fund this? Fire chief said that then they wouldn't deliver the ambulance. I doubt it, but if they don't, they don't. So that's how I feel. Thank you.
I'll just, yeah, say exactly what Council Marquetti said. Good evening, everybody. But definitely, the ambulance was requested. There was a surcharge letter. The previous town manager, McCall, had negotiated a good portion of it with the vendor. If we had not done any negotiations and agreed to pay the 10,000, a little over $10,000, we would have lost that purchase for the ambulance and we would probably have to go wait another two years to get another ambulance. So that would put us behind the ball. So this $10,000 is for the cost of them doing business, increase of metal, wiring, electronic components. It in, I believe in the packet, if you received it, there was a description of the contract. The actual contract was in there. There is nothing about overages stated in that contract. We will clearly make sure there is something in there for the next contract that comes around. But this is a very similar situation with some DPW equipment that just went through.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Those against? Eight to one. Motion passes. Meeting at two-thirds majority. Council Marquetti against. Item number 40, vote to approve a fire department transfer request for $2,600 from account number 001220-511700 salary and wages part-time to account number 001220-515000 holiday pay to cover the final holidays of fiscal year 23.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Council Lozlo, second by Councilor Ryan. Council Lozlo.
Through the chair, the vote was unanimous to approve this transfer.
Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 41, vote to approve a fire department transfer request for $12,000 from account number 001220-585600 safety equipment to account number 001220-527100 uniforms and gear to cover costs for an immediate need of turnout gear for a new employee.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Council Lozlo, second by Councilor Ryan. Council Lozlo.
Through the chair, the vote at subcommittee was unanimous for approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 42, vote to approve a fire department transfer request for $500 from account number 001220-585600 safety equipment to account number 001220-270000 rentals and leases to cover costs of rental gear for new firefighters.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Council Lozlo, second by Councilor Ryan. Council Lozlo.
Through the chair, the vote from subcommittee was unanimous for approval.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Last page. Item number forty-three. Vote to approve a fire department transfer request for six hundred dollars from account number zero zero one two two zero dash five eight five six zero zero, safety equipment, to account number zero zero one two two zero dash five four three zero zero zero, maintenance and improved building to cover emergency repairs to garage bay door.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Ryan. Counsel Lazo.
To the chair, the vote at subcommittee was unanimous for approval.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Vote is eight to one. Counsel Marquetti opposed. Motion passes. Item number forty-four. Vote to approve a fire department transfer request for two hundred dollars from account number zero zero one two two zero dash five eight five six zero zero, safety equipment, to account number zero zero one two two zero dash five two five one zero zero, maintenance and repair of equipment to cover the cost for flow testing equipment.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Dow. Counsel Lazo.
To the chair, the vote at subcommittee was unanimous for approval.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one. Counsel Marquetti opposed. Motion passes. Item number forty-five. Vote to approve a fire department transfer request for eight thou, um, eight thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. That's a transfer request for eight five zero, eight hundred fifty dollars from account number zero zero one two two zero dash five six nine zero zero zero, licenses, permits, and taxes, to account number zero zero one two two zero dash five eight five one zero zero, furniture and furnishings to cover the cost for new chairs for the kitchen and conference room.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Ryan. Counsel Lazo.
To the chair, the vote was unanimous to approve this transfer.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Eight to one. Counsel Marquetti against. Motion passes. Item number forty-six. Vote to approve a fire department transfer request for five hundred fifty dollars from account number zero zero one two two zero dash five one nine three zero zero, tuition, to account number zero zero one two two zero dash five one nine two zero zero, uniform allowance to cover the cost for half of the uniform stipend for a new employee.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Ryan. Counsel Lazo.
To the chair, the vote was unanimous at subcommittee for the approval of the transfer.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty-seven. Vote to approve a fire department transfer request for one thousand dollars from account number zero zero one two two zero dash five three four six zero zero, recruitment, to account number zero zero one two two zero dash five one nine two zero zero, uniform allowance to cover costs for call department, uniform shirts.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Ryan. Counsel Lazo.
The, to the chair, the vote at subcommittee was unanimous for the approval of the transfer.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty-eight. Vote to approve a fire department transfer request for one hundred dollars from account number zero zero one two two zero dash five eight five six zero zero, safety equipment, to account number zero zero one two two zero dash five four five zero zero zero, janitorial housekeeping to cover costs for additional needed janitorial supplies.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lazo, second by Counsel Ryan. Counsel Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, to the chair, the vote at subcommittee was unanimous for the approval of the transfer. And I would like to comment with my fellow colleague, Mr. Adams. This is one of those one hundred dollar transfers to cover toilet paper.
Thought they ran out of Ajax. Counsel Ryan.
I just, I, first, I want to say thank you to Chief for sticking it out till the end here. Congratulations. Thank you. And then, second off, I just wanted to personally thank you for all your efforts that you did in Spencer. That was wonderful, and you were a great representation of the town for your actions there. So thank you. You, you made a difference by being there, so kudos to you. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number forty-nine. Counsel's form. Let's go alphabetically today. Counsel Dow.
Thank you. I just want to say, a longstanding business and the look into business in our town got a win this week. Our friend at the Center of Hope were at risk of being unnecessarily delayed in opening. They are putting the final touch on their new and widely anticipated ice cream shop and come-to-town hall to their common vic license application and was given the impression it was going to take week, if not months, to get that proof. Left addresses, this will have several compromises that earning for them this season and kept smile of a good many face and compromise our reputation to address businesses in the community need and all add citizen expectation. I thank the Chair, the Vice Chair Adam and Town Manager and who get involved for the letter and resolved the issue in response to correct the process and coming up with a new clearly standard checklist for this coming in, in the future. I am happy to announce there will be ice cream and a smile on Forster Street this summer. And don't forget to vote tomorrow. Yes on one and for, for me too. Thank you.
Here it goes.
Here we go. Counsel Lazo.
I would just like to congratulate the new SHS alumni on graduation. Once a pioneer, always a pioneer. A real shout-out for the Eagles Club to donate ten thousand dollars to the town of Southbridge for small club on Mill Street. Their generosity just is second to none. I want to touch on one of the issues Counsel Dow brought up earlier. Business in Southbridge. I have to say that the council, mainly Mr. Adams, Chairman, Manager, Joe Dow especially, there are issues that come up and we get calls and we react, we actually answer the call. Whether it be the ice cream stand on a common vic, whether it's central pizza on a gas line, whether it's Twelve Crane Street on a liquor license, it seems to me the town hall makes it difficult. And we need as a government to step up to the plate in the upcoming months to reconfigure the mentality of some of the people that are just too dictatorial to invite business into our town. I think we need to work on that. We know who we are. We know where the problems are. We need to straighten it out through our department heads and our manager. And finally, I'd like to wish the candidates tomorrow good luck. I'm glad I'm not up for election and have to do all that work. But tonight, I have a special word. Counsel Dow is a counselor. He's here. He's here because he serves. Jackie Ryan's on the ballot. She's here because she serves. But there's a young fellow back in the back of the council that goes to every meeting. And nobody knew who this kid was. Twenty-six-year-old kid, hardworking, owns his own house, manages an HVAC department or local business. His name's Ari Ortiz. He wants to be a counselor. He has been at every subcommittee for education and services. He goes to every town council meeting. Now, I'm, I'm a dinosaur and I get it. But when you see a young kid, twenty-six years old, that once again involved in your town, that sits here till ten thirty, eleven at night just to learn how to be a counselor, to serve you as a town, he deserves your vote. Thank you very much.
Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a longstanding tradition that we don't campaign here at the Dais, but I just want to wish everybody the best of luck tomorrow on the election. And I hope you, everybody can get out there and vote. Thank you.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of attending graduation. It was very nice. I also had the pleasure of attending the meeting this morning with Russell Johnson and a couple of other people. I got two things from that meeting made very clear to me that while some of us here may not agree on how they spend the money in their budget, especially when it comes to administration, the state says that they completely disagree with that. They're, they're fine with having a bazillion administrators. And then the other thing that I learned was that if the town goes and votes yes on one, the state has said that they're going to just continue as planned and continue to not listen to, I mean, they're going to digest it. And one comment was that your feedback is well-received. Thank you for that. So I hope you can all go out and vote yes on one tomorrow. And if you know me, you already know who I'm supporting. And I just released a video today that I hope perhaps our state officials can hear our call for, please do something about this. I mean, it's clear this morning after that meeting that Desi has no interest in doing anything for our concerns about the budget and about accountability. Thank you.
Counsel Rivas.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everyone that came out to Wellstorm Inc. Serenity Games at the Common on Saturday. Was put together by Carla de la Cruz Sávila. It was a great event. Families came out. Little ones had a lot of things to do. And we're hoping that the, the event continues every year. Thank you to those who participated in half a yoga with me on the Common. That was great. We'll be at another event on Saturday, the twenty-fourth. I'll be doing yoga again on the Common for Family Fun Day. And that is being put together by Southbridge Community Connections. Again, different events for our community, for families, providing opportunities for little ones, for the whole family to get together and to enjoy yourself. You know, beautiful weather, beautiful days. I want to say, I wasn't able to attend the graduation in person, but I was really happy that it was online and that we could watch as our graduates receive their diplomas. And I want to say congratulations to the graduates of twenty twenty-three. I recognize so many of the students who were in my health classes, and it's great to see them, you know, crossing that threshold. Felicidades a los graduados del año 2023. Estamos muy orgullosos de todos nosotros, de nuestros estudiantes que trabajan fuerte. Les deseo mucho éxito. I hope everybody, you know, I wish everybody good luck and for, you know, continued success. It is a big deal to graduate from high school. And we are, we are all proud pioneers. I want to just remind everybody, like everyone else, tomorrow's election from seven AM to eight PM at the community center. I will not endorse candidates here on the Dais, but I will do so on a video on Facebook later to, actually tomorrow morning. So look for that, since I respect the rules. I also want to remind everyone, the Ruth Wells Art Center will have the Midsummer Festival on, actually, this this Saturday, the seventeenth, from ten AM to four PM. And it's sponsored by the Mass Cultural Council from ten to four. Good luck to all the candidates. We are really lucky that we have so many qualified candidates running for town council and school committee. You know, it, other towns, I, I sit on a lot of different grassroots groups, and other towns struggle to get people to run for any seats. So we're really blessed that so many people have expressed interest in, you know, so many different perspectives. You have a lot of choices. Please come out to vote. We've been doing a lot of voter registration events. We've been out in the community. Bring your family, bring your friends. Doesn't matter who you vote for, just get out there and vote tomorrow, even if it's raining. We expect to see you. So, thank you.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, first, I also just want to say congratulations to the class of twenty twenty-three. I watched via the live stream that was online, and that was nice to be able to watch everybody graduate and not have to be there. The I just wanted to say, regardless of what happens tomorrow, thank you, Southbridge. Thank you for sending me here. It's been the honor and a privilege to be here and serve you. The thi, the work that I've gotten to do on this council has been some of the most profound work. Helping make sure that the most disadvantaged among us get busing and have access to busing. That was important to me, and I was so happy to get that done. Regardless of what happens, I'm proud of the work and the result I leave behind. I wish everybody luck in tomorrow's election. It's not easy to run for office. And the fact that you people are putting their names out there and letting themselves be heard is a testament to the strength of our community and diversity of thought. I do ask for your vote tomorrow, but I will respect whatever the outcome is because I know in the long term, Southbridge is going to succeed because of the good work this council has done. So, that's it, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I said, as people who have been paying attention down here, I've been here for nine years, and I wanted to say thank you very much to everybody who has put me up here the last couple of times that I've run. I obviously cannot run again for the, because of our term and limit system. And honestly, it's time for a change. I'm going to do something else. And I wanted to say thank you for all of you guys who have been up here that I've served with, whether you're on the council right now or have been in past years. It's been a pleasure and an honor, and I think that we have done an awful lot over the last nine years to, to push the town in, in a direction that we really have needed to go for a very long time. And I think that that has a lot to do with all of the people that have been involved here, whether they're elected or appointed or the citizenry who just comes up and talks from the podium or any of the other ways that they communicate with us up here. And I would like to really see more people getting involved. I know I said this repeatedly on several occasions. And, you know, whether you run for office and, and win, or if you don't win, get involved in some way. We have a zillion vacancies on various committees and boards. We really need people. I would especially like to, to suggest that those of you who just graduated, I was also, I had the pleasure of being at graduation this past weekend. And I would love to see some of you get involved in our community. We have so many opportunities in town that we need a more youthful voice. Because you may have noticed, and this is not to, to insult anybody who's up here, but we all tend to be a little on the older side. And we really do need younger voices because the issues that our town and our world are facing are going to, they'll hit us that are up here, but they will seriously hit you, and we really, really need you to get involved in solving some of the issues that we face. Because the world is going to be your world. And it's best to have it be something that you help create and that we'd be more than willing to help you create it, but ultimately, you're the ones who will have to deal with it. So that's, so it's kind of your turn. So come on up and participate, please. And also, I would like to make a couple, just a couple of quick announcements. I was going to mention the yard center as well, so thank you for mentioning that. The, but also, I just wanted to point out, I'm also part of the Dudley Grange, and we're doing our strawberry festival on Thursday from four till whenever the strawberries run out. So come on down for that. And also, let me see here, anything else I want to mention? Oh, there's also the, the Morris Street Yard Sale on the twenty-fourth, which is the same day as Family Fun Day. So you can run down from Morris Street and go to the Family Fun Day thing. And as for those of you who are running, I also will not specifically endorse somebody, but I just want to recommend, to kind of tie into what I said a second ago, that you take a, take a look at people who are running. I did write profiles of all the people who are running for the newspaper. And I would seriously think about who you're going to cast your vote for, and think about those who have the breadth of knowledge that it takes to, to, to put the town on a good, even keel moving forward for the long term, because that's what we need, is some serious, long-term thinking. Thank you for putting me up here.
Very good. Vice Chair Adams.
So thank you, Mr. Chair, to the previous speaker. I don't know what you're talking about, age and being older, so I take offense to that. Especially Counsel Lazo, or actually Marquetti, probably more than anybody up here. I wish everybody best luck tomorrow. If you look at my, my yard, I'm an equal opportunity person. And I put all the signs up there that gave me the sign. So I just want people to be recognized, and I appreciate you out there campaigning. I know how hard work it is to do that, and then your nerves are up high right now, and you'll know tomorrow night about eight fifteen. So looking forward to that. Speaking of that, looking forward to seeing the reorganization meeting on, on July tenth, and I'm looking at seven PM here in the Dais. I'm looking forward to seeing how that all plays out, and I, I'll have my choice words when I, when that time comes around, but I do I wish whoever is running and whoever does the vice chair and the, the chair, I wish them nothing but the best luck. You'll have my support until you don't. And I do, to the town manager, I wanted to, I brought up something to hand to the other day. We are in real neglect when it comes to subcommittees of doing minutes and approving minutes, and, and be honest with you, if there was an open meeting law violation, we'd be fine probably right about now. There's a thing called Autor AI, dot AI, that actually takes, when you do the video, it takes the transcripts for you. And it's a simple tweak of words here and there, and I wouldn't mind having that take a look at down the road as we need to actually start following open meeting law and getting that stuff done. So I'd, I'd be willing to, whatever the money would be, to, to come up with that. I'd like to take a look at it. The graduation was awesome. I, misinformation is key here. Again, with the schools, I know there's a lot of passion with these school, the schools and the receiver, and that's why we've been working hard with the state, directly with the state, and only with the state in a lot of areas. But give you an example, for two days straight, all I heard was there's only going to be forty people graduating. And then there was going to be like twenty that were not going to graduate. And they're not going to give them anything or whatever it may be. There, clearly at the graduation, there's over forty people. There's close to a hundred individuals. So right there, being adults in, in the room, we have to, we have our own responsibilities to tell the truth based on facts and not innuendos or, or BS. But that being said, the meeting today with the school, the, for Desi, I do appreciate them coming down here. And Russell, coming down there, and Dr. Valar. I took a lot more out of that conversation than some individuals did, and, you know, I guess we can can disagree on that one, but the fact is, we got them to the table, finally, right? So we finally got the receiver back to the table, have a conversation, we finally got the state back to the, Senator Fatman, he's talking about Mr. Riley coming back before the, the fall. There's some promises made by, 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 by the state, but they also made it very clear that they, they have certain responsibilities that they have to hold on to by law. Tomorrow's vote, regardless of how you vote on, on yes, which I'll be voting in favor of myself, and I'm not trying to endorse it, is a non-binding vote, and we've always should looked at it as that, but I do appreciate the, those that put that out there, because I know how much they'll mean to the town, really do. But I ask us to be all adults in the room, and not going off of allegations and go off of facts, even if it takes three weeks instead of two days to find out the true information. That being said, Memorial Day, I, I really want to thank the council. As a veteran myself, and, and a man who's lost quite a few friends, appreciate the counselors that came out. It was the first time in three years that I've been running the Veterans Council, that I saw multiple counselors. I always see Counsel Marketti, he's always out there, and I do appreciate it. A lot of differences of opinions, but I do really, really appreciate it. I know your brother was a Marine. And I appreciate all that, and John, and now I have new counselors that are showing up. I got the reporter over here, and I've got, you know, and then, I think this was the biggest bill the Veterans Council ever had to pay in booze, by the way. But that was our own money that we, we raised. But it was good to see all those kids, 30, 40 kids from the school systems, all of them. Trinity Catholic Academy, and some people actually came up, I think it was Mr. Shenier, who said, you know, maybe the Little League next year, done, we'll put that invite out to a lot of these other smaller organizations that are, you know, even, that, that represent our town and who we are, and thank, thank God for the men that never came home, in some senses. So we, we thank them every single day. But that Memorial Day was pretty damn cool, when I ran out of space to put them at the rotary, didn't know where we were putting them at, that was the first time since I've been there that we saw that actually happen. The pandemic, we had a big showing because everybody was inside, they wanted to get the heck out, and we gave them a reason to get out on a ceremony. But every year, it's got, the band was awesome, I mean, you, you talk about the teachers that showed up there, I remember town managers showed up, and I appreciate that a lot, because I tell you what, I don't think I've saw the town manager in the last few years. And you're right down the road, and I know the Veterans Service Office over there, too. So it was good to see you, for coming from Southbridge. Anyways, I just want to thank the public, and I'm looking forward to the video coming out, what you guys come up with from cable access, but I got to tell you, you know, almost all counselors came out there. So I just want to thank you, because you supported that, you supported me, you supported those, those veterans and, and those family members that lost, specifically at the Gold Star Mother Monument, so I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and we, as veterans, thank you. And lastly, I'm open up, I'm opening back up the ARPA Committee, and it'll probably happen sometime in July, as I've spoke with the interim town manager, I spoke with Anna, as, they may not feel a need that we have to hold on to some of that money for the curbside. So I'd like to, those individuals that put the request in, I would like to revisit those requests first, before we add on anybody else, but nothing says you can't put the request in. So, that's all I've got tonight. Next meeting is June 26, 2023, 7:00 PM here in the Dais, that's it.
Very good. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Lazzo, second by Counsel Steves. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present, we are adjourned.